We're getting ready to begin.
Not just yet.
Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation. At this time, can everybody please silence your cellphones? If you wish to testify, please go up to the Sergeant-at-Arms desk to fill out a testimony slip. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach today's, I repeat, no one is to approach today's. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Great. Good morning. My name is Lincoln Wrestler, and I am the Chair of the Committee on Governmental Operations and State and Federal Legislation. That's a mouthful. I'd like to welcome my colleagues who've joined us this morning, especially Councilmember Brewer, who I'm very happy to see, and of course, Brooklyn's newest council member, the one and only David Carr. It's good to see you both. At today's hearing, the committee will be conducting an oversight, will be conducting an oversight hearing on New York City's lobbying laws and necessary reforms. Governing doesn't happen in a vacuum. We rely on external stakeholders for policy expertise and technical information, but we must ensure that there is transparency, accountability, and integrity in our government, and that certain actors do not have an outsized influence. We need to put careful limits and reporting requirements in place to prevent people from profiting off of government service, and to demonstrate to our constituents that this is a fair and just city with leaders who are prioritizing the needs of our constituents over special interests or self-dealing. It's been over a decade since the City Council held a lobby. It's been over a decade since the City Council has held a lobbying oversight hearing or considered legislative updates to our current lobbying laws. I want to thank Speaker Adrienne Adams for her support in holding our hearing today. In the past decade, the lobbying industry has exploded. In 2023, lobbyists were paid over $131 million to lobby city officials. That's nearly double what they brought in since our last lobbying oversight hearing over a decade ago. It's past time to take a fresh look at our lobbying laws and consider what improvements we can make to strengthen them. It is our responsibility to make exceedingly clear to the public who has the ear of their elected officials and how much they are paid to exert their influence. In addition to examining the effectiveness of our city's lobbying laws, we will be hearing three bills today that I believe would help increase transparency and integrity in our city. Intros 76 and 77 will close loopholes in existing lobbying rules to end the revolving door of senior staff exiting city government and immediately using their power to lobby on behalf of shady clients. I will offer the example of the mayor's first chief of staff, Frank Carone. He was involved in the hiring of all senior officials. He was involved in every key policy decision that was made by the Adams administration, and yet he freely admitted that he was building a future lobbying practice while working in this very building. When he left city government at the end of 2022, he was legally permitted to lobby 99% of city workers the very next day. The only restriction he faced was advocating on behalf of clients to people who worked in the office of the mayor, but every other mayoral agency was fair game. To offer some insight into the scale of his practice at Oak Tree Solutions, New York Magazine recently reported that Carone's firm is generating at least $24 million annually in lobbying fees. Beyond senior city hall staffers, current laws fail to take into account the relationships that the most senior agency leaders build across city government, which is why our legislation would ban the most powerful policymakers from lobbying any city agency after leaving public service, not just the one they work for. Our legislation would finally make New York City's post-government service lobbying restrictions consistent with the widely heralded paragon of good governance, Albany, New York. No one should be allowed to leave a position of power in city government and exercise that power to influence city agencies as they pass through the revolving door, and that applies to city council members, too. That's why our second piece of legislation proposes an expansion of anti-lobbying rules to ban former council members from appearing before any city agency for two years, not just the council. The loopholes in our existing system undermine the integrity of our government and the faith that New Yorkers have in us when their needs are being overlooked at the expense of special interests. We need to ensure our public officials are committed to the public good, not to enriching themselves. Intro 742, sponsored by my colleague, Councilmember Gail Brewer, would prevent individuals who have worked as a campaign fundraiser or political consultant from lobbying the elected official whose campaign they worked for for a period of two years. When a council staffer leaves my office, they must wait for a period of time before engaging the council on work-related issues. The same should be true for our campaign staff. I want to thank our committee staff, Council Jace Reganopathy and Erica Cohen for their hard work in putting together this hearing. I'd also like to thank my communications director, Neve Mooney, for her terrific work. She's also getting married next week, so happy almost wedding, Neve. And I lastly want to thank my chief of staff, Molly Haley, for putting all so much work into this and being extraordinary. During the hearing, I will be calling on panelists to testify. I'd like to remind everyone who is testifying via Zoom that you will be on mute until you were called on to testify, at which point you will be unmuted by the host. For those of you who are testifying in person, be sure to sign up with the Sergeant-at-Arms in the back, even if you registered in advance. You may approach the witness table when your name is called and turn on your microphone before giving your testimony. At this hearing, we will be inviting testimony from the Complex of Interest Board and the City Clerk's Office, and then from members of the public. During the hearing, if council members would like to ask a question of the administration or a specific panelist, please let me know, and I will call on you in order. For all panelists, when called to testify, please share your name and the organization you represent, if any. And we will be also including the Campaign Finance Board to answer questions as well. We will now call representatives of the administration to testify. We will be hearing testimony from the City Clerk, Michael McSweeney, and Deputy Clerk, Damaris Acosta, Ethan Carrier, General Counsel at the Complex of Interest Board, and Carolyn Miller, Executive Director of the Complex of Interest Board. And we will also be joined for questions by Paul Ryan, Executive Director of the Campaign Finance Board. At this time, I'd like to firstly recognize Ina Vernikov. Thank you very much, Councilmember, for joining us this morning, and I'd like to call on the Committee Council to administer the affirmation.
Oh.
And Councilmember Shahana Hanif. I didn't see you sneak in there. Good morning. And we'll do that before. So why don't, can I get it to you, or you want to go to Gail first? Why don't we go to Councilmember Brewer for her opening remarks, and then we'll swear in the folks testifying today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Chair Wrestler, for your focus on this issue. Many years ago, I was Chair of Government Operations Committee, and I know how important this topic is to the City of New York. I want to just start by saying I have a lot of respect for lobbyists. I think they bring information that is crucial. They often have lengthier careers in topics that sometimes, because of term limits and the way our city operates, more expertise than many others, and is vastly needed by our city. So I want to tell, say that to start with. The intro 742, which I am the sponsor of, along with Councilmember Wrestler and others, he said it correctly. If I have a staff member who is leaving and becomes a lobbyist, they have to wait a year in order to talk to me about any substantive issue. However, just like many other people, I employ individuals who helped me get elected, known as a campaign advisor. Sometimes it's a company, sometimes it's an individual, sometimes it's a combination of people. Those individuals, in my opinion, should stick to campaign work. They should not be contacting me about issues. According to the wonderful briefing, and I always want to thank the staff because these briefings are phenomenal, the lobbying of city council members in 2023 accounted for 24%, and lobbying of city council staff was 17%. Spending on lobbying the mayor and his staff accounted for 9%, which apparently was much more than previous mayors, which, who averaged between 4% and 6%. And as you heard from the chair, there's a lot more money involved in lobbying today. So it is important for me, when you think about the mayor, the public advocate, the city controller, the board president, and the council member, all of whom, I believe, employ individuals to help us get elected, I personally don't want somebody who's helping me get elected, for whom I have great respect, coming to me with an issue, number one, of lobbying topics is real estate, followed by nonprofits. And I may have a lot of respect for the real estate firms and a lot of respect for the nonprofits, but if they want to talk to me, they should call me individually. I'm happy to talk to almost anybody. There may be a few people I don't want to talk to, but most people I will talk to. And so the issue is, do it that way. Do not have your campaign people. Similarly, somebody who's working with you on substantive lobbying issues, I don't want them to be running somebody's campaign. To me, that is a mix that should not exist. Most, to my experience, most people separate them. They either do campaign work, or they do lobbying work. They don't mix. But there are some that do, and I think that's a situation that should not exist. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Brewer. And I will say that in preparing for this hearing, I did look back to transcripts from when you were chairing the committee and was very impressed. And it's unfortunate that we're still talking about some of the same issues that you were advocating for 15-odd years ago today, but that's where we are, and we're going to keep pushing. So without further ado, I'd like to invite the members of the administration who are here to testify, or members of city government who are here to testify. I'll call the representatives again up to the, to join the panel, City Clerk, Michael McSweeney, and Deputy Clerk, Damaris Acosta, Ethan Carrier, and Carolyn Miller from the Complex of Interest Board, and Paul Ryan from the Campaign Finance Board. Thank you. Oh, yeah. And Patrick Sinmoy from the Clerk's Office as well. Everybody squeeze in?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Let me just administer. Thank you, panelists. Will you please raise your right hand so I can administer the affirmation? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before the committee and respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Should we start with Coy, and then perhaps the Clerk's Office after that?
Yeah, let's just line with us. I just want to make one little note before we start. We're not part of the administration. We're an independent city agency. I am Ethan Carrier. Good morning. Chair Wrestler, members of the Committee on Government Operations, State and Federal Legislation. I'm the General Counsel at the Complex of Interest Board. Here with me is the Board's Executive Director, Carolyn Lisa Miller. We are here on behalf of COIB to offer testimony about intros 76 and 77 of 2024. Since its creation by the voters of the City of New York in 1989, COIB has been entrusted to administer the city's Conflicts of Interest law found in Chapter 68 of the City Charter to fulfill a critical mission: to preserve the trust placed in public servants of the city, to promote public confidence in government, to promote the integrity of government decision-making, and enhance government efficiency. COIB supports the council's interest in furthering this mission. However, when considering proposed amendments to Chapter 68, it is critical to maintain the delicate balance of both public interests at play here. The need to limit the reality and appearance of undue influence by former public servants on government decision-making versus the need to continue to attract highly qualified people to city service. By seeking to amend Chapter 68 through legislation rather than through a charter revision commission, that balance may not be achieved. The interests of the impacted stakeholders will likely not be fully accounted for, and unintended consequences could well result. First, some brief historical background. The first post-employment communication ban imposed on former public servants in New York City was proposed by the 1986-88 Charter Revision Commission and approved by the voters in November 1988. That restriction, found in Charter Section 2604-D2, was narrowly tailored and straightforward, prohibiting almost every public servant from appearing, a defined term in Chapter 68 that essentially means communicating for compensation, before their former city agency for one year. For elected officials, deputy mayors, and the heads of six named city agencies, the restriction extended to the branch of government served, which for council members was the city council, and for the other named officials was the entire executive branch. This new prohibition supplemented two longstanding post-employment restrictions: Charter Section 2604-D4, which prohibits a former public servant from profiting from or communicating with any city agency about a particular matter on which they worked at the city, and Charter Section 2604-D5, which prohibits a former public servant from using or disclosing confidential information obtained from city service. In essence, Charter Section 2604-D2 was added to serve as a one-year buffer for former public servants communicating with their former city agency, even on matters that they had nothing to do with in their city work and involved no confidential information. Charter Section 2604-D2 remained unchanged for 32 years. During that 32-year period, COIB provided extensive guidance and education to former public servants about the application of the one-year post-employment communication ban, including 31 advisory opinions and countless pieces of formal and informal advice to individual public servants. The first and only changes to the original one-year communication ban were proposed by the 2019 Charter Revision Commission created by the City Council. The proposal substantially increased the complexity of the ban by creating a multi-tiered restriction. The first tier is most public servants, still subject to the same one-year ban. The second tier is elected officials and the same small group of high-level officials identified in the original first-year post-employment ban for a branch-wide prohibition. They have the same branch-wide prohibition, but now for two years instead of one. The third tier is a new group of public servants, the heads, the head of an agency that is not a, not a border commission, the executive director or highest-ranking public servant employed by a border commission, and any paid member of a border commission. For this third tier, they are now subject to a two-year ban, but only for their agency served. The proposed amendments were approved by the voters in November 2019 and became effective for public servants who left city service in January 2022. So some concerns about process. These significant changes are the only changes to the restrictions to Chapter 68 since it was approved by the voters in November 1988, and they took effect just over two years ago. Two years is too short of a time to judge the impact of those charter amendments, in particular, the impact on that delicate balance between limiting the appearance and reality of undue influence on government decision-making with the need to attract the best professionals to city service. There may come a time when it becomes clear that amendments to the post-employment communication ban are necessary, but now is not that time. Moreover, if such a time should come, proposals to amend the charter should be considered through a charter revision commission process. This is how the prohibitions of Chapter 68 have been amended historically and for good reason. A charter revision commission engages in a longer deliberative process and seeks, through multiple public hearings, the input of a large cross-section of stakeholders. Here, such stakeholders would include the current public servants impacted by change in their post-employment job opportunities, hiring managers at city agencies, such as the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, who have struggled to retain and replace essential professionals in the current job environment, and those who work in transition teams or appointment offices on the recruitment, appointment, and retention of agency heads and people to serve on city boards and commissions. Finally, if any changes to Charter Section 2604-D2 were to be made now, they should be limited to the referendum on the conduct of elected officials in intro 76. To proceed as now proposed, that is, to enact both intro 76 and intro 77, would effectively restrict the conduct of non-electeds first. Then, if and when such referendum was on the ballot, there would be no real choice for voters, because what voter would want a ban on elected officials to be less restrictive than other senior government officials? Some concerns about substance. Chapter 68 itself and the 2019 amendments were the result of an extensive deliberative process with substantial input and consideration. Any serious change to the regulation of former public servants' conduct should be carefully crafted and as narrow as possible to balance the admirable purpose of ensuring the integrity of government decision-making while not unduly restricting the future professional lives of current public servants. Any additional restriction might have serious collateral consequences for the recruitment of qualified people for important positions throughout city government. COIB's concerns about the substance of intro 77 reflect only what this agency has identified in the brief time it has considered this legislation. We would anticipate that additional substantial concerns would come from the many voices that would emerge in a charter revision commission process. So some concerns about part-time and unpaid policymakers. Chapter 68 imposes lesser restrictions on the conduct of part-time public servants with the implicit understanding that their public service must coexist with their primary private employment. Intro 77 erases this distinction by adding public servants charged with substantial policy discretion, what we call policymakers, to the category of those with a two-year post-employment communication ban. Many policymakers are part-time public servants, largely those who are members of boards and commissions, and some part-time members of boards and commissions are unpaid. Intro 77 would impose a one-year post-employment citywide communication ban on part-time unpaid policymakers, followed by a second year of an agency-specific ban. The unwarranted consequences, excuse me, unwanted consequences of this proposed change are demonstrable in one such commission, Landmarks Preservation. LPC commissioners are policymakers who serve part-time and unpaid. Under Charter Section 3020, the 11 commissioners of the LPC shall include at least three architects: one historian qualified in the field, one city planner or landscape architect, and one realtor. Under the current law, an architect serving as an LPC commissioner is prohibited from communicating with LPC during their city service and for one year after departure. Under intro 77, that architect would be prohibited from communicating with LPC during their city service, but after departure would have a much more extensive restriction: citywide for one year, and then LPC for a second year. A citywide communication ban would effectively preclude an architect from maintaining their practice in the city by prohibiting them from communicating with agencies essential to construction, such as the Department of Buildings, the Department of Transportation, and the Department of Environmental Protection. The city needs industry professionals to be willing to serve on LPC. It is difficult to imagine any architect, city planner, or realtor willing to make that level a professional sacrifice for an unpaid city position, and it is likely that current LPC commissioners, who are active industry professionals, would resign before intro 77 takes effect. The same circumstance exists for many other similarly situated city boards and commissions, including many barely paid members of boards and commissions. And the recruitment challenges would impact elected officials other than the mayor. The Taxi and Limousine Commission and the Board of Correction, for example, both have part-time unpaid board members appointed by the City Council and would be subject to a two-year post-employment communication ban, including a citywide ban of the first year. I'm going to talk a little bit about full-time policymakers. Policymakers is a term defined in Board Rule Section 1-02. These are public servants designated as such by their agencies. The designation criteria are imprecise and vary greatly depending on the agency's size, hierarchy, and service structure, whether operating centrally or in district or borough offices. Mindful of this, over much of 2023, the Board worked to amend Board Rule Section 1-02 to create a more uniform set of policymakers across differently sized and structured city agencies, but failed to identify criteria that would not be either over-inclusive or under-inclusive. Without a better option, the Board elected to leave the policymaker definition as is and engage in more fact-finding and audit and auditing instead. In its current form, policymakers is a widely overbroad category upon which to impose a two-year post-employment communication ban. It likely includes hundreds of public servants without the portfolios or responsibilities that would cause them to have any influence on an agency other than their own. For policymakers at agencies already experiencing difficulties with hiring and retention, approximately 60 at the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, over 100 at the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, for example, there is a strong possibility that there would be resignations before intro 77 took effect, and even greater challenges in recruiting good candidates. A couple of other overbroad categories. While there may be others, COIB has identified two other anomalies that would result from intro 77's new multi-tiered structure. In intro 77's second category, the executive director or highest-ranking public servant employed by a board or commission would be subject to a one-year citywide ban, followed by a second-year agency-only ban. This would mean that district managers at community boards earning between $75,000 and $95,000 per year on average would be prohibited from communicating with all of city government for one year, a result disproportionate to their influence with any city agency other than their own community board. In intro 77's third category, policymakers, quote, "in service of the executive office of the mayor," end quote, would be subject to a two-year citywide ban. This would mean that the 19 members of the Mayor's Advisory Committee on the Judiciary, part-time unpaid policymakers, would be subject to a two-year citywide communication ban. Members of the Mayor's Advisory Committee on the Judiciary, who include law firm partners, arbitrators, and the CEO of a city not-for-profit, would likely resign before being subject to such an expansive prohibition, and it is hard to imagine what qualified individuals would be willing and able to replace them. These are just a handful of the examples of the impact of the proposed amendments on the hiring and retention of qualified individuals to serve in city government, whether as full-time professionals or part-time board members. We would anticipate that those who work in recruitment and hiring of agency heads and board members would have even more examples. COIB stands ready to work to advance, as the charter mandates both the integrity and efficiency of city government, and we are available to answer any questions the council members may have. Thank you.
Thanks for that. We'll now turn over to the clerk. Actually, if you don't mind, I just want to thank Councilmember Palladino for joining us today. Sorry, Mr. Clerk.
Chairperson Wrestler, council members, it is an honor to be invited to testify in the council chambers today. I thank the Committee on Government Operations and State and Federal Legislation for this privilege. Let me start by acknowledging some of my senior staff members who were in attendance today. Damaris Acosta, Deputy City Clerk in charge of the Lobbying Bureau, newly returned Deputy General Counsel Jamie Lynn Scherichella, who's joined us but not at this table, and General Counsel Patrick Sinmoy. Since Local Law 129 of 2013 has been enacted, lobbying compensation has doubled, as you pointed out earlier. Our 2014 annual report listed lobbying compensation in the amount of almost $63,000, $63 million. Our most recent report in 2024 listed compensation to the tune of almost $131 million. In 200, okay, in 2014, we reported that 1,972 statements of registration were filed, as compared with 2,282, which were reported in 2024. The Office of the City Clerk is responsible for the regulation of all lobbying activity in New York City. Our office first regulated lobbying of local officials in 1972, when the council passed Local Law 72, I'm sorry, Local Law 79 of 1972, and then Local Law 86 of 1973. Through the Lobbying Bureau, we conduct outreach, training, compliance reviews, audits, and investigations and enforcement to ensure that all entities who attempt to influence New York City government, namely lobbyists and clients, not only file requisite reports timely and accurately, but adhere to the text and spirit of the law. Our primary goal has been and continues to be transparency in government. The promotion of transparency in government is a tool that not only educates the public, but also serves as a cornerstone to protect integrity in government and to combat waste, misuse, fraud, and corruption. New York City Administrative Code Sections 3-211 through 3-223 regulate the conduct of lobbyists and their clients. There are two types of lobbyists. There are two types of lobbyists. The professional standalone lobbyist and lobbyist-client filers, who are essentially in-house lobbyists. A lobbyist is a person, business, or organization that is retained by a client to engage in lobbying in New York City. A lobbyist-client filer is an entity whose employees lobby on behalf of the person, business, organization itself. The client is any business, person, or organization who retains employees or designates another entity to engage in lobbying activities on its behalf. Currently, there are approximately two hundred lobbyists, four hundred and fifty lobbyist-client filers, and two thousand two hundred and eighty-two clients registered in e-Lobbyist. In two thousand twenty-three, two thousand eighty, two thousand eight hundred and ninety-one statements of registration were, excuse me, filed by lobbyists and lobbyist-client filers. The law defines lobbying as an attempt to influence eleven specific activities, including: one, legislation by the city council; two, local legislation by the mayor; three, contracts or public monies, for example discretionary funds awarded by council members; four, determinations involving zoning or land use; five, determinations regarding the sale or purchase of real estate; six, any determination regarding a rule; seven, agency rate-making proceedings; eight, the agenda or determination of a New York City board or commission; nine, calendaring or scope of a council oversight hearing; ten, mayoral executive orders; and eleven, any support or opposition of federal or state legislation, rule, or regulation by a New York City elected official or employee. The lobbying reporting system is a self-reporting system, and the determination of whether an activity is reportable is a detailed, fact-specific, three-part analysis. The filer must first review the eleven defined activities which I just stated, the list of excluded activities, and the reporting threshold of over five thousand dollars per year, and determine whether reporting is required. The obligation is on the filer, upon consultation with their counsel, if they have one, and they choose, or they choose to retain one, to review the facts and law and report accordingly. Ultimately, the filer must look to the nature and intention of the communications, who is communicating with whom and for what purpose, and determine whether reporting is required. Required reports are client-based and include a statement of registration and up to six periodic reports for each client, fundraising and political consulting reports if applicable, and termination notices if applicable. Every client is responsible for filing termination notices, as well as a client annual report. I want to emphasize the point that the lobbying law apply, applies the same to all entities regardless of whether an entity is a for-profit or a nonprofit organization. This includes foundations, non-for-profit organizations, and charities. Per the Administrative Code, all people and all entities that attempt to influence the government, the city government, fall under the jurisdiction of the Office of the City Clerk regardless of trade or profession. I'd like to point out that there is no such thing as illegal lobbying. As lobbying is a constitutionally protected form of freedom of speech. The question falls as to whether communication with elected officials or officers or employees of the city government are reportable. Since its inception in nineteen seventy-two, the lobbying law has been amended multiple times. However, the most significant amendments occurred via Local Law fifteen of two thousand six and Local Law one twenty-nine of two thousand thirteen. The amendments contained in Local Law one twenty-nine of two thousand thirteen were based in large part upon the recommendations of the Lobbying Commission. The Lobbying Commission consisted of a panel of experts from all areas of government, both public and private sector. The amendments of two thousand thirteen were expansive and included: an expansion of the definitions of lobbying, increasing the city clerk's reporting requirements, codification of daily late fines for late reports, implementation of a mandatory training program for all lobbyists, initiation of a one-time amnesty program, and the creation of a system for applications for waivers or reductions of late fines and civil penalties. The amnesty period commenced on January first, two thousand sixteen, and continued through June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. The Lobbying Bureau received one hundred and twenty-seven applications for amnesty, and ultimately, one hundred and twenty entities were granted amnesty, allowing them to file reports without penalty. From two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-three, the rules of the city have been amended four times to implement numerous important changes, including: the amendment of the rules in their entirety in two thousand fifteen to conform to newly mandated provisions of Local Law one twenty-nine of two thousand thirteen; the amendment of Section one dash sixteen D two regarding the deadline for submission of amnesty applications; the addition of Sections one eleven C two and three to add a provision defining what constitutes minor authorizations by the City Planning Commission for, and minor decisions related to real property, and most recently for amendment to remove automatic extensions granted due to late enrollment per Section one eleven C two. In two thousand eighteen, the Lobbying Bureau announced the New York City Lobbyist Search Database. The enhanced capabilities of this system greatly assisted our continued efforts to promote transparency in government. The enhancements included dropdown menus by year, lobbying subjects and lobbying targets, text search capabilities, including the ability to search by any lobbyist, client, employee, or government target name, the ability to print reports, and the expansion of the available information, including retainer agreements and fundraising and political consulting reports. NYC Lobbyist Search, which is updated twice monthly, has allowed the public to access lobbying information more quickly and more efficiently. The implementation of NYC Lobbyist Search allows any member of the public to have information at their fingertips rather than submit a FOIL request, which can be a lengthy and time-consuming process. In addition, we were able to partner with the NYC Office of Technology and Innovation, OTI, formerly known as DO-IT, to create a lobbyist data platform as part of NYC Open Data. The program allows any member of the public to download the entire lobbying database without confidential information in CSV format. Both Lobbyist Search and NYC Open Data have served as a tool for not only the public, but also the media and fellow governmental agencies from all levels and from all over the country to conduct their own research and investigations. For example, recently, we received inquiries from the City of Chicago and the Federal Reserve Board, Department of Research and Statistics. And we've had many more going back years before that. Each year, the Lobbying Bureau staff reviews over twenty thousand reports submitted on the e-Lobbyist System for timeliness and completeness. On average, the Lobbying Bureau collects between two hundred thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand in registration fees each year. In addition, each year, the Lobbying Bureau continues its efforts to uncover unreported NYC lobbying by comparing statements of registration filed with the New York State Commission on Ethics and Lobbying in Government, COALEG, with the statements of registration filed on the e-Lobbyist System. In two thousand twenty-two, six thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven state reports were reviewed. In two thousand twenty-three, nine thousand one hundred and forty-one reports from the state were reviewed. Since two thousand thirteen, late filers have been afforded the opportunity to apply for a waiver and/or reduction of late fines and civil penalties. Applications are reviewed by a committee per the standard set forth in the Administrative Code. The committee takes the following factors into account in determining whether a waiver or reduction is appropriate, including: whether and how the lobbyist or client has filed late in the past, the annual operating budget of the lobbyist or client, whether the lobbyist lobbies solely on its own behalf; for periodic reports, the number of lobbying matters, number of hours spent working on those matters, and the amount of compensation and expenditures that were not reported during the relevant period, and the significance of the impediments the timely filing faced by the lobbyist or client. Pursuant to the rules, significant impediments are used in Section one dash twelve F two-two D of the rules are limited to the death of the principal officer or designee, or immediate family members thereof, the illness of the principal officer or designee, or a force majeure. The Lobbying Bureau works diligently to timely and accurately respond to all requests for filing assistance and provides written responses and advisory opinions interpreting the law. In two thousand twenty-three, we responded to over five thousand requests for filing assistance and interpretations of the law. Each year, our annual report contains data and analytics on the type and numbers of requests received. The Office of the City Clerk is engaged in numerous outreach and training initiatives. Every new lobbyist is required to attend training within fifteen days from its first registration. Every experienced lobbyist attends training every two years. Training is held via Microsoft Teams platform and is also available via prerecorded video. Each year, we conduct approximately ten to fifteen sessions, which are attended by three hundred lobbyists on average. Notably, our help desk is available via phone and email to answer basic questions or for step-by-step e-Lobbyist filing assistance and opine on complex inquiries. When it comes to lobbying in New York City, the constant pattern has been one of growth. Each year, as mandated by the Administrative Code, we publish an annual report which contains detailed analytics, including the number and complaints received from the public, the number of random audits conducted by the city clerk and the outcomes thereof, compliance programs developed and implemented for lobbyists and clients, the number and type of requests for assistance related to the lobbying law received by the city clerk, the number of lobbyists in filing and statements of registration for the first time, the subject matter of lobbying activity most frequently reported by lobbyists, the lobbyist targets most frequently reported by lobbyists, the lobbyists that receive the highest compensation, and such other information and analysis as the city clerk deems appropriate. We are pleased to provide feedback with respect to the proposed law changes and answer any questions regarding the enforcement of the city's lobbying law. Thank you for your time and attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the committee.
Thanks so much, Mr. Clerk. Appreciate you and your team being here. And thank you, Mr. Ryan. We appreciate you being here for questions. I think I'll start with some questions for COIB, then kick it over to my colleagues, and then ask questions of the other agencies. So just firstly, my understanding is that COIB has a relatively small staff, just twenty-one positions currently budgeted. I think that's down sixteen percent from twenty-five positions prior to the mayor coming into office in two thousand twenty-one. Is that right, and do you have sufficient resources to meet all of your mandates, your charter mandates? And what impact does the recent peg that the mayor imposed, which would cut two positions, have on your operations?
We endeavor, right now, we have twenty-two employees. The peg is four twenty-one. So when the next employee, whomever he or she might be, leaves, we won't be authorized to hire that, a new, a replacement for that person. We've lost someone in our education unit. We've lost a paralegal who supports the legal work of the entire agency. And most recently, an attorney in our enforcement unit, which, an enforcement unit of four people, losing one person is essentially twenty-five percent of the ability of the agency to pursue complaints of violations of the Conflicts of Interest Law. So we are, have always been a very small city agency. You know, we consider ourselves sort of punching above our weight, as it were. But the, in an agency that in January twenty-two, twenty twenty-two was twenty-five people, and now is just twenty-two people, it's very significant to have that few, to lose those individuals who work to give advice, to pursue enforcement, and to train over three hundred thousand city employees.
I think we'd all agree that the COIB Twitter count has long punched above its weight. But just in all seriousness, you know, as Mr. Carey testified at the beginning of his remarks, COIB is not technically a mayoral agency, but it's subject to mayoral approval on your headcount and, and your budget. Is that problematic that you're both tasked with kind of ensuring ethics compliance of the mayor, and he's responsible for determining your staff capacity and budget?
The Conflicts of Interest Board has long sought an independent budget in various, when there have been charter revision commissions. The board has testified seeking an independent budget, like the Campaign Finance Board and other similar agencies have. The board proposed an extensive series of charter amendments back in two thousand and nine and submitted them to the city council at that time, also with the request for an independent budget. So there are challenges to have the same sort of category of individuals who are subject to the regulation of the Conflicts of Interest Board also decide the staffing and budget of the Conflicts of Interest Board.
Great. We did read those two thousand hour recommendations and would certainly support them. A review of COIB's enforcement actions showed that there had only been approximately thirty fines imposed for post-employment violations in the previous decade. How do you monitor potential violations, or potent, how do you monitor potential violations? And I'll just add, you know, my back-of-the-envelope math is that we see about turnover, we see turnover about twenty thousand people a year in city government. So over a decade, we're talking about two hundred thousand people that have left city government. But we've seen only thirty post-employment violations issued. So that's less than one-tenth of, of one percent. How have we been doing, and what more can we be doing to identify folks who are violating this rule?
Well, I'd say first that among, it's, it's, you know, the city workforce is huge. People work twenty-four hours a day. Sanitation workers start shifts in the middle of the night. You know, city doctors, city teachers have very regulated schedules. It's very difficult to reach city employees, to educate them about their obligations under the Conflicts of Interest Law. That all being said, among the provisions that's most commonly understood by people is the GIFTs rule and the one-year post-employment communication ban. And I would say that's quite effective, that most times when our educators go into city offices to teach people about the Conflicts of Interest Law, most people will raise their hand that they understand that they can't communicate with their former city agency for one year. So I think in some ways that lack of enforcement actions is a reflection of a very effective educational structure by our agency and by agencies themselves for their own employees. Many agencies have in the offboarding, there's probably a better word for that, procedure to tell people about the post-employment restrictions. We have no investigators on our staff. That was a structure that was created by the Charter Revision Commission back in eighty-six, eighty-eight to separate the enforcement mechanisms from the investigation mechanisms. So we rely on the Department Investigation to investigate. But I will say that because most people, most city employees are aware of that one-year agency-only ban, if a former colleague communicates with them about a private business, or a not-for-profit, or some other city contract, they often are the, the, the contact is very limited. It's just that one communication, and someone reports it either to the agency or to the Conflicts of Interest Board. There could always be more education. We are very serious about doing enforcement. So if there's a complaint that we receive, it's, we pursue it, we prosecute it, and we endeavor to educate the public servant involved, because usually the complaint happens so quickly that they're still in their first post-employment year, and so we can ensure that no further violations occur.
I, when we're finding approximately three violations a year and twenty thousand people are leaving city service, it's, it's possible that everybody's just complying with the rules and the law. It's possible that the loopholes are so big that people can drive a truck through them. Or it's possible that we just don't have the enforcement capacity to, to catch people that are doing the wrong thing. I want to ask about, you know, why don't we shift to, you know, the hypothetical situation of, say, the mayor's chief of staff, who had approved all hiring decisions, been involved in every key policy decision in the mayor's first year in office, decides to leave city government. Could you just remind us, what are the restrictions currently on who he can appear before after he leaves city service?
Let me just, before I do that, let me just add a fourth category to the three that you listed, which is of like, why it is there aren't that many post-employment violations. When you have a city workforce that's very well-educated about what the post-employment restrictions are, when a former public servant tries, of that agency, tries to contact his former colleagues, they know what the rules are, and they tell that person, "We won't talk to you," right? So they're in fact shutting this communication down before anything substantive actually happens. I think that happens all the time. We, I actually get calls from attorneys at city agencies just saying, "Hey, we're just confirming. This guy wanted to talk to us. We said we can't, we're, you know, we're right, right? He's still in his first year. The restriction applies that way." That's right, and there's no reason to like, you know, find somebody money when the city agency identifies it right at the outset and nothing substantive happens. So that fourth category is important, and I think actually covers thousands of such attempts probably each year. With regard to the senior staff at the mayor's office.
Specifically, chief of staff leaves the mayor's office. What are the exact restrictions that are on him when he departs city service?
Right, so the, the, the chief of staff at the mayor's office is one of the people who continues to have a one-year post-employment communication ban with his former agency serve, which for the mayor's office would be the mayor's office and all the mayor's offices of.
Right.
So all the sort of satellite entities created by.
Just to confirm, the mayor's chief of staff is, is not permitted to speak to people who work in the mayor's office, about one percent of city government, but is permitted to, to engage and appear before the very next day every mayoral agency in the city of New York?
Yeah, though that one percent is a little misleading of a number, right? Because it's the mayor's office.
Well, it's one percent of the city workforce. It's maybe three thousand or so employees out of well over three hundred and thirty thousand. And he can appear before every agency head in the city of New York and lobby them the very next day, twenty-four hours later. Correct?
After, yes, so he is not subject to a one-year communication ban.
Right.
But, but, hold on, that's not the only post-employment restriction he's subject to. He's also subject. He's also subject to the lifetime particular matter ban, which means, which would prohibit him from communicating with any city agency, whether compensated or not, about any particular matter on which he worked when he was at the mayor's office.
I do want to come back to that. You know, it was reported widely that while working in this building as chief of staff to the mayor, he solicited and signed clients or solicited clients and agreed to lobby on their behalf upon, after he departed from city service. Is that right?
I, I have no idea.
Well, it's been widely reported in Politico, City and State, and many other outlets. And in fact, Brendan McGuire, the former chief counsel to the mayor, who's now his defense attorney, had to correct on the record his statements because Mr. Carone admitted he, you're aware of these reported articles in the press?
Yes, I've seen the articles. I'm just saying, I, you know, that's, that's, right. And I wouldn't be able to comment on anything else that I might know about.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep asking questions. So is it permissible for a city employee to build a book of clients, lobbying clients, while working in city government for future lobbying practice?
It really depends on the details of those circumstances.
Well, give us some insight here.
I, I think there's, it's just, I don't want to comment here about the particular conduct of any particular public servant, and that's inevitably.
How about we do a hypothetical? Chief of staff to the mayor.
We know, we know who we're talking about here. So I don't want to, I don't want to comment about the particular conduct of any particular public servant.
Okay. But I'm concerned, I mean, what's the status of COIB's investigation into this matter?
That would be illegal for me to disclose to you. Even whether there is such a thing. But let's, let's focus on the, on the, on intro 77, right?
Well, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drive the questions on this one. So somebody works in city hall, is recruiting lobbying clients, right? And you're not able to confirm whether that is permissible? The chief of staff to the mayor, the most powerful person in city government, shy of the mayor himself, is recruiting lobbying clients for his future practice? You're not able to confirm whether that's legal or not?
Chair Ressler, I'm, I'm not able to say the answer to that question for two reasons. One is, I don't actually know the facts of this circumstance.
But it's been widely reported in the press exactly which clients he retained prior to leaving office?
Again, because I don't know the, I don't know or could not disclose the facts of any such circumstance.
And you're unwilling to confirm whether it's been 16 months since his departure, whether COIB has looked into this matter and its legality?
Chair Ressler, as I said before, I would be violating Chapter 68 if I disclosed whether the board.
How long does it typically take COIB to determine whether to look into a matter of this type?
Just, just so that we can back up, the, the, right, we're implementing a law that was created in 19, by a Charter Revision Commission that is intended to protect the rights of individual public servants and their ability to seek advice from the Conflicts of Interest Board. So every single public servant who seeks advice from the Conflicts of Interest Board, we provide confidential advice to that person and we will disclose to nobody whether that person has sought advice and what advice they received.
But that wasn't my question.
Similarly, when there's a complaint about a public servant, whether in the press or any, by an individual person, whether we've received a complaint is confidential as a matter of law under the city charter. That's the way the charter is structured. Whether we've referred it to DOI for investigation, that's confidential as a matter of law. If you sought from DOI, whether or not DOI is conducting an investigation, we believe also DOI would keep that confidential. They're required to by the charter. The only time the board can speak about the past conduct of a public servant is when the board, the five-member board, has made a final finding that that public servant has violated the Conflicts of Interest Law. I can confirm that no such finding has been made by Frank Carone. That's the only time, no, no staff member, no board member could, could answer the questions that you're posing as a legal.
So I'm asking approximately, how long does it take on average for COIB to come to that determination that wrongdoing may have occurred?
The, so that's a question, right? That's a question, that's, right? We don't have investigators at the Conflicts of Interest Board.
I understand.
So DOI conducts its investigations. They have a broad mandate and they've also experienced budget cuts. So how long a DOI investigation takes can vary widely from a year to much longer than that, depending on the nature of the conduct alleged, the investigation, what it's required, witnesses, subpoenas, and other things. But I'm not the expert on how DOI conducts its investigations.
I understand. I'm just looking for context on how long it might take for you all to look into a matter like this. And do you look into similar matters when you, based on reports of potential illegality in the press?
When, not potential illegality, we look into, we, when we read articles in the press or we receive complaints that if true, would constitute violations of the city's Conflicts of Interest Law, which is a limited law, which regulates very specific conduct, we refer those complaints or press reports to the city's Department of Investigation for investigation. Every single complaint we receive is reviewed by an attorney and is evaluated for whether that, if true, would constitute a violation of the Conflicts of Interest Law.
But you are actively monitoring press reports and if there are concerns, you will investigate them accordingly?
If there are reported conduct that would constitute a violation of the Conflicts of Interest Law, which again, is not, is, there's many things that public officials may do that's way beyond what the limited Conflicts of Interest Law regulates.
Right. But you're, you're unwilling to testify today when the chief of staff to the mayor of New York engages Northwell Health, the largest private employer in New York State, as a client, to lobby on his behalf prior to leaving, that he's going to lobby on their behalf prior to leaving city service, that Northwell Health gets $11 million in new city contracts, significantly more than they've ever received, immediately after Mr. Carone leaves public service, you're unwilling to testify whether that may be a potential violation?
I would hope that the, my insistence, our insistence on following the mandates of the Conflicts of Interest Law would not be read as unwillingness, but rather as adherence to the legal requirements of confidentiality that our board is, is, is required to uphold.
You know, as you noted in your testimony, the post-employment plan, the post-employment ban does not just restrict lobbying, it prohibits all communication for compensation through the end of last year in the case of Mr. Carone. We all know that he and the mayor have been in active communication during that time period as he serves as the chair of his reelection campaign. I realize you're not going to offer any insight into specific guidance that you've offered, but can you confirm that COIB is monitoring the situation or if any guidance has been provided to ensure that there has not been any legal communication in the previous year?
The Conflicts of Interest Law, the city charter mandates as a matter of law that any communications we have with any individual public servant seeking advice is confidential and any advice that person received is confidential. So if any council member had sought advice from the Conflicts of Interest Board and a reporter called us and said, "Did so-and-so council member seek advice from the Conflicts of Interest Board?" we wouldn't say whether they asked, what they asked about, or what we told them. So again, I cannot, as a matter of law.
I hear that. But oftentimes we'll hear elected officials, public officials, say, "I consulted with the Conflicts of Interest Board. They told me this was fine." And we have no insight whether you did tell them it was fine or whether they're accurately describing the guidance that they received. When an elected official misrepresents the guidance that they've received, publicly misrepresents the guidance they've received from the Conflicts of Interest Board, what will you do then?
The law prohibits the board from disclosing whether someone sought advice or what advice they received.
I just, I have to say, when we're identifying three cases out of 20,000 people leaving city service for violating post-employment restrictions and we're unable to really drill down that somebody in the most senior role in city government is creating a lobbying practice while working at city hall, that there's potentially illegality happening, I, I find myself quite frustrated. So I just want to move on to the substantial discretion policymaker list. Could you describe the proposed changes to the substantial discretion policymaker list that you're pursuing in recent updates to the rules, the capa rules?
Yeah, the, the board is, in the, in the process of considering some proposed changes to the policymaker rules that are just about the process of doing that work. That is, trying, some, some efforts to, the current law has agencies designating policymakers once a year. The board concluded that wasn't frequent enough because, you know, turnover, you want to sort of have more accurate lists. So that's being updated to be twice a year now. And is requiring that agencies provide some additional information, including some organizational charts so that the board and the board staff can do a better job of evaluating whether or not the people that agencies are designating are in fact the people who have the authority and responsibilities that should be designated as policymakers. They're not leaving people out or adding people on there who shouldn't be there. In addition to that, the board is codifying a practice that the board began several years ago, where the board has taken over the responsibility of notifying policymakers of their additional legal obligations directly, rather than relying on agencies to do that, just to ensure that it's happening and that the communications about those are uniform. So those procedural things, there was a public hearing for that yesterday and the board at an open meeting sometime in the near future will evaluate those procedural changes.
And in addition to potentially requiring organizational charts, which I think would be helpful for verifying the accuracy of these lists, have you considered other requirements such as agency heads or deputy mayors signing off on the accuracy of these policymaking lists?
The board hasn't considered.
We've found there's like wild discrepancy from agency to agency on who gets added to these lists and who doesn't. And so we think it would be helpful for there to be some senior officials who have more global views verifying the accuracy of who is actually on the substantial policymaking list.
Right. The, the board hasn't contemplated that because it hasn't been our experience that agencies have been reluctant to add people to the policymaker list when the board or even board staff suggests that they should be on there. So the truth is, there's just not really much of an incentive for a city agency to limit that list at the moment. Because the restrictions that, the additional restrictions that those public servants are subject to are not that, are not particularly onerous. There's a fundraising restriction and a restriction on holding very high offices for political parties. And while it would also mean that they would have to file an annual disclosure report, almost all of the people who are designated as policymakers are already annual disclosure filers anyway by virtue of the managerial level of position that they're in. So there's, there's, there's just not, agencies don't really push back on, on, on those lists. And I think at the moment, it's mostly just a matter of when agencies have reorganized, they maybe have not looked again at whether or not the new organization, the people in their new roles in the agency really match up with the way the rule would require. And so there's a little bit of cleanup that probably needs to happen and that's, that's mostly what we've been aimed at.
I, I just want to say on the record, I, having worked in city government for over a decade, I totally disagree with your assessment that people don't care about being on or off the list. People actively try to stay off the list. You're not able to fundraise, be on a host committee. You can't be involved in all kinds of political activities that people care about if they're on this list. And so in my experience, when we were in the de Blasio administration, when I worked in the de Blasio administration, there was wild discrepancies, agency to agency, on how they approached this list and a lack of uniformity in who was considered a substantial policymaker. And so while we appreciate some of the improvements that are considered in the rules, we don't believe you're going nearly far enough in ensuring that the right senior policymakers are being accurately reflected on this consistently across the board. I have a bunch more questions for you all and I haven't even had a chance to bother the clerk yet. But let me kick it over to colleagues who may have questions so I know everyone has busy days. Let me start with Chair Brewer, if that's okay, with Councilmember Brewer, excuse me, former chair of this committee, as she has a bill, and then we'll go to Councilmember Carr.
Thank you very much. And I'm not exactly sure who would help, but I think it would be the clerk's office. The idea is what we described in Joe 742. Persons who are active in political campaigns could not be lobbying and lobbying, lobbyists who are active as lobbyists could not be campaigners if they are insistent on having the conversation between the campaign and the elected official. So is that something that you could carry out in terms of enforcement? Do you think you have the capacity to do that? It does have an additional type of person perhaps. And maybe what kind, if it was to be the law, what kind of information would you need in order to enforce it? I think, yeah, go ahead.
We would certainly be willing and able to carry it out. It would require some changes. But I also would like to point out that there is a limitation in the law because it includes for compensation political consulting. It does not include political consulting and fundraising that is done pro bono, that is not compensated. So that is an important distinction. And it does have, it does curb the amount of reporting that is, that is engaged in by lobbyists, for example. Because if they're not compensated for their political consulting, they do not have to disclose it. But we could certainly undertake, you know, with proper legal changes, we would be able to carry, carry it out. It would, you know, we'd have to make technological changes to our filing systems, which obviously is not, you know, we'd have to do that in consultation with OTI and there's budgetary constraints and technological issues that have to be worked out. But we do feel that it would be in line with our current operations and enforcement and that we would be able and willing to, to follow any policy changes.
All right, thank you. One other question just generally, and maybe it's in the briefing and maybe you mentioned it. But what's the percentage of people that you find and how do you find them? Is it from individuals who make complaints? I mean, how do you find people who you feel are abusing the law? How does that mostly get communicated to the city clerk?
We get phone calls, we get, you know, tips from time to time. It's not a great number. And, you know, it, we're not getting, you know, contacts from good citizens who are trying to advise us of unreported lobbying. It's usually another lobbyist or somebody in the community with a beef and they're carrying out a vendetta. That's usually, you know, where the, the primary source of information comes from.
Interesting. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Chair. I guess this question's for COIB. You talked in your response to the chair's questions earlier about how agency officials will contact you and say that they shut down attempted communications by former employees who were still within their, the scope of their post-employment ban, talking to their former agency. What's, I guess, what's, what's the point at which you deem that to be actionable on your part? Because you're saying like, oh, the communication was shut down, nothing ended up happening because the agency knew better. But that doesn't mean people aren't making multiple attempts at that over the time with different agency personnel. At what point does it rise to the level where nothing happened but you'd still want to maybe have that referred or considered on your part?
Yeah, there's a variety of factors that go into it and it's the decision that's of the five, the board itself, that, you know, it's not a staff decision about whether to pursue enforcement. Certainly, if someone were to receive, we had a record that they received formal written guidance before they left city service and they still made a prohibited communication, then we know that the, sort of the pre-shutdown hadn't worked and then enforcement would be appropriate. If the contact wasn't just a casual, let's set up a meeting, but the meeting itself, then, then we would likely pursue enforcement. It's not sort of the, because the post-employment communication is not lobbying, it's a whole wide array of communications that former city employees make. And many city employees stay in the fields in which they worked in city service. So we're talking about an ACS caseworker who goes to work for a private not-for-profit foster care agency. And if at that private foster care agency, they call ACS to say, "Hey, we're wanting to make sure we have all the right information" or "case files" or something like that, what would be a prohibited post-employment communication, not lobbying? We would want to look at that and make sure that that person understood what their obligations were. If they're at a big meeting about the, a contract, then that's probably something we'd pursue enforcement.
So you said the board makes all the decisions. Is there no time when staff will say that this isn't worthy of board attention? You're presenting every case to the board?
No, if there's something, not every single case. If there's something that we can deal with that's just like, someone made a phone call, the phone call wasn't returned, it immediately came to us. You know, sometimes there's a voicemail message. "Hey, Bob, it's Sheila, I used to work there." And it immediately comes to Ethan Shop, who's in addition to being general counsel, supervises the legal advice unit. We, we, our goal is to prevent violations before they occur. So if we can reach out to a public, a former public servant and educate them about the Conflicts of Interest Law, you know, we're trying to solve these problems sort of one public servant at a time.
Understood. So i- in the event that you have a clear-cut violation of the Conflicts of Interest Law... So i- in the event that you have a clear-cut violation of the conflicts of interest law being alleged to you, a complaint that's submitted to you, what level of verification do you engage in about whether or not this is, I guess, what level, at what point does it become actionable in your view? Because it's possible someone makes a frivolous complaint, it's some possible someone just makes something up, and it may even get reported on publicly. So what's, what kind of assessment do you engage in whether or not that specific allegation is even credible?
Yeah, so in, so, right, so if something is reported in the press, almost always it's going to require a formal investigation by the department investigation, obtaining documents, interviewing witnesses and the like. In the post-employment context, sort of uniquely, is that often when we get complaints, the person who was the sort of recipient of the prohibited communication is telling us, hey, former employee Sheila was at this meeting and she, she just left the agency six months ago. So both for the goals of like, that's enough evidence for us to establish a violation, and because we want to prevent the former employee from engaging in any additional prohibited conduct, we would proceed with that evidence that we had already. So the post-employment first one-year ban violations are sort of the ones we can move most quickly on.
So for, and this is for Coib and perhaps also the city clerk's office, there are plenty of folks who leave city service, right, who, who were maybe civil service employees, they took tests to get their positions, but then there's the folks like us in the committee, elected officials, high-ranking members of agencies in the mayor's office. Are there particular people that you monitor upon leaving city service based on what they do, whether they're going to not-for-profits or into the lobbying field? There's no pro, in order to make sure that they're complying with lobbying registration and whatnot, if they're engaging in those activities, or is it purely reactive to complaints and allegations?
We encourage, the, sort of the first line of proactiveness is always education. So to the extent that the, you know, the depart, city, city service departure checklist includes a handout that we've created about the post-employment restrictions, that's the ideal scenario. There's no monitoring that we do, we're, again, we're a staff of 22 people, we have no investigators, you know, as, as Chair Russler noted, 20,000 or so public servants leave city service every year. So this is way beyond the capacity or really probably appropriateness of the agency, but we try to educate as much as we possibly can.
Thank you, Chair.
I'd like to turn it over to my friend and neighbor, Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you, Chair Russler. I'll start with the city clerk's office. And just thank you so much for being here, and this is a topic of great interest, but also if I wasn't a council member, I'd be tuning in to this hearing specifically. The 2013 lobbying report suggests that the lobbying bureau should have a designated full-time staff person responsible for conducting education and outreach, not just to registered lobbyists, but in venues where there are likely to be people who may be subject to the requirements of the lobbying laws, but may not be registered. Do you have a staff member or members who are responsible for conducting outreach?
We, we had a, we, we did hire a staff person after the enactment of Local Law 129 of 2013. That person ended up leaving, and we had difficulty retaining another person to do those, to, to perform the training function. So my deputy city clerk and deputy agency, my deputy general counsel have been conducting the training and some of the outreach. But we, you know, we kind of got into the habit of training, training those people through my, those two people, so that we've met our training requirement. But it just got easier to, to, to make sure we met our training requirement, and after having difficulty in, in retaining that person, we haven't, you know, successfully gotten back to that.
Got it. So two members of the team who are not the, the outreach representatives are right now filling that role, or have, as a part of their portfolio. Could you just walk me through what the, the extent of the outreach looks like and the trainings that you're fulfilling?
Yeah. So we actually, as part of the amnesty program, there was very specific activities that we were required to undergo. We were required to take out advertisements, attend public meetings, distribute materials, public, you know, commercials, and we fulfilled all of those activities that were specifically mandated by that, by the law. But there's other activities that we conduct on a yearly basis, quarterly basis, to, to conduct outreach and to train. And we continue to do those activities even without that staff position. So examples include, every year we contact every single agency that receives discretionary funding and inform them of the lobbying law and invite them to communicate with our office if they need more information. In addition, we review every single report filed with the New York State lobbying entity to make sure that if they are lobbying in New York City, they're also reporting with our office. So for example, last year we reviewed approximately 9,000 reports filed with the state, and we compared them with the approximate 3,000 reports filed with the city and made sure that anyone that wasn't in our system came into our system. And as a result of that, we contacted approximately 94 entities. But we also, you know, if we, we definitely haven't been able to physically go out there and attend as many meetings and conduct as much community outreach as we did when we had the trainer, because for example, when we had the trainer, the trainer along with other staff that's sitting here, we went to every single community board meeting, every single borough board meeting to publicize the information. So we've had to come back, cut back a little bit on some of our field operations, but certainly we continue to review all publicly available information to make sure if we see evidence that there's unreported lobbying, we investigate. And we haven't decreased those efforts even, you know, without that staff-
Without the staff person. But would it be, of course, better to have the staff person?
Of course, right? More help is always going to be beneficial.
And now, is somebody in the process of being hired, or could you just walk me through what are the proactive steps to make sure that folks who were not meant to do this specifically are not bearing the, the obstacles?
We actually could not, because of the pegs that our agency had endured, our head count was reduced. We, our head count was 62 and it went down to 55 in the last pegs, so we cannot hire any, anyone new at the present time.
You said to 50?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, from 60?
Sixty-two.
Got it.
Oh, I just want to, sorry, I just want to add, we are the marriage bureau, right? That's the love side, and also the lobbying bureau, which I call the non-love side. So just to clarify, the lobbying bureau has five members, staff that full-time work on the lobbying bureau, so in that-
And then the, the married, I was about to say the love bureau, but-
Right, the love bureau. So that number includes both bureaus, in, in addition to our other functions, such as, you know, our esteemed commissioner, who presides over city council meetings, commissioner of deeds, oaths of office, you know, we conduct bonds, you know, and certainly my, my general counsel could speak more to that. So we have multiple functions that we are performing with that head count, and it's five people that are performing in large part the activities and functions of the lobbying bureau.
Thank you. Chair, I have a few more questions. Turning now to Coib, and I do have to, of course, celebrate the, the social media presence, really appreciate it. So I, I, I want to just get some clarity on the two pieces of legislation. Are you making a recommendation that we pursue a charter revision and, and go through that route as opposed to these two pieces of legislation?
We, right, we're recommending that if the city council wants to contemplate changing the restrictions in Chapter 68, in particular the post-employment restrictions, that that would be the better process, because it would really provide the sort of multiple public hearings and, you know, sort of massive outreach to get all the people who are kind of stakeholders in this, the opportunity to get to weigh in, you know, in particular, the, the public servants who are going to be affected by this, who when they become private citizens are going to have their speech restricted with regard to their communications with city government. And the people in city government now who do the hard work of trying to recruit good people into these city positions, that, that, like, hearing what those people think is a thing that the Charter Revision Commission could do, and it could really take its time to figure out how changes to this post-employment restriction fit into what is really an interrelated set of post-employment restrictions. The lifetime particular matter ban and the confidential information ban, you know, work with this restriction, and so when you alter one piece of that, it's trying to make sure it fits in with the others. Which is not to say that there, there might not be room for some improvement, though we did just have changes come into effect just over two years ago, some pretty substantial ones. And our thought is, it might make more sense to, at least in large part, let's see how those go. The last version was, worked for 32 years, let's see how this version works for more than just a couple of years before we start changing it again. But the charter revision process, we feel like is a, a sort of better way of, of doing the hard work of getting this right. And so that's our, and it's also the way that the charter has, you know, our, the Chapter 68 has always been changed in the past, so it feels like the sort of best process.
And could you, for everybody who's listening in on this great hearing, who would be leading that process? Like, would it be on Coib to identify the public hearings? Like, would that be staff capacity at Coib?
Well, I mean, a charter revision commission should be independent, I mean, even from us. We would obviously be eager testifiers and, and providers of information to a charter revision commission. But that should be a commission that really is, also has a cross-section of people with different points of view and, and so forth, who are trying to take, you know, testimony from everybody and kind of figure out what's best for the city. So it shouldn't be us who's doing that, but it should be a, you know, a nice diverse set of people who constitute a separately-created charter revision commission.
Got it. And then for what types of organizations are former elected officials and public servants lobbying, in your experience?
Oh, well, you know, that's a, it's an interesting question. I mean, so this prohibition, I, I don't know the answer to that question because we don't regulate lobbying. We regulate former public servants who are communicating with the city for, you know, under this post-employment restriction, which is both sort of broader and narrower. It's not all lobbyists, because probably most lobbyists are not former public servants, I don't know, I'm guessing, I'm assuming most of them are not. But, but we're, our concern is only about those former public servants. And it's broader in that it's communication of all different kinds, not necessarily stuff that would qualify as lobbying, though I'm not expert in what requires somebody to become registered as a lobbyist. But it's all kinds of communications, as long as you are paid by somebody to communicate. So not just sort of classic lobbying, but also kind of routine business communications, seeking non-ministerial licenses and permits from the city, lots of things that I think people would not normally think of as being necessarily the kind of advocacy kind of thing that maybe we think of when we think of lobbyists. So this is sort of a, just a different kind of restriction. It's really mostly focused on, right, only former public servants, and it's mostly focused on trying to make sure that government officials who might know those former public servants because of the work that they did are not being unduly influenced. So it's sort of a cooling off period would be maybe the way to describe it.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hanif. So just to do a little bit of a recap, you testified that the mayor's chief of staff, the widely recognized most powerful person in city government shy of the mayor, could lobby 99%, could appear before 99% of city government the day after he left office. And you've also testified that you believe the current laws on post-employment restrictions are appropriate and good, that they've worked well, I think was your language, over the last series of decades. I, I could not more strongly disagree. You've testified in opposition to the bills that we're considering today to impose further restrictions and recommended that the only, that the appropriate way to consider modifications would be through a charter revision commission. I have to ask, you're appearing before the city council, we're the duly-elected representatives, we pass bills every single month. Why are we not equipped to pass legislation here?
Well, I certainly did not say that you're not equipped to pass legislation.
Okay.
I'm just suggesting that for a change that's going to impact so many public servants, and that is a really complicated change in the post-employment restrictions, that the, that there are a lot of different stakeholders who should be heard from, and that it should be done over, you know, some time where people really get to spend a lot of time, like a group of people really get to spend a lot of time sort of thinking about this and hearing testimony from a lot of people. And as charter revision commissions are the entity that have done that for Chapter 68 in the past, it just seems like the best process for us. It's not to say that there might not be other processes, just that that would be sort of the best practice.
Yeah. You also testified that you weren't familiar, you had a limited time to review our bills. We introduced them well over a year ago, so, you know, hope that, I believe there was ample, more than ample time to review them. I, I just have to, to dig in a little further. The, as you noted, the, we had the 2019 Charter Revision Commission that imposed a more extensive ban on deputy mayors, directors of OMB, corp counsel, decast finance, DOI, CPC chair. Now, they all have a two-year ban from appearing before any agency in the branch of government that they served. Why should that not apply to the mayor's chief of staff, or the mayor's chief counsel, or the HPD commissioner?
Oh, I'm not, I'm not actually saying that I don't think it should, uh-
You just don't think that it's appropriate for us to move forward with that change at this time?
Right, I'd-
So it may be something that you could support in the future, you just don't support it today. Is that right?
I'm saying two things. One, one, I think that we've, because we've just had these changes in the post-employment restrictions, it would be good to see how they work out, because we really haven't had the sort of big turnover of an administration to kind of see what the impact of these new changes would be, because these changes came into effect in the first year of this, of this current administration. So seeing that sort of big turnover moment and what the implications are of that for recruitment and how that, you know, how, how, how well that's working, I think it's a little bit yet to be seen. And then the, the second thought is, right, just one, just one about process, right, just we, we, we just want to make sure that we have good process and that we've really heard from everyone. Certainly, the law has always required and should require that higher-level public servants are subject to greater restrictions than people who have lesser authority or authority-
But haven't you testified today that that isn't the case? I mean, we've acknowledged 10 times on the record today that the most powerful person in the city of New York shy of the mayor himself in city government could lobby 99% of city officials hours after leaving public service. How is the current law working well? How are, do we have the appropriate restrictions in place? I, I'm flabbergasted by Coib's approach to this.
Well, it's, I mean, we didn't write the law that exists today.
Right, but you're saying that you don't want to see changes to it at this time, and that is shocking to me, considering that we can all see that the current law is broken. We have far more, greater, we have far greater restrictions in Albany, New York, in the biggest swamp of, in this, like, entire United States than we do here at City Hall. How is that acceptable?
Councilmember, I, I think that you've identified one person who may need, one position in city government that may need greater restrictions. It's not to say that the-
No, I'm just giving an example. I want to be clear, I could keep going if you'd like me to. It's just a very right one.
I, I, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, I, we've had a post, a new, newly-enhanced post-employment restriction, right, in effect for just a couple of years. It's, you know, there is no such thing as a law that fits perfectly for every person, right? There's always going to be some people for whom the law is applying perhaps too strictly or perhaps not strictly enough. And I, and I'm not disagreeing with you about its application in the example that you've provided. I'm not disagreeing with you that there may be other people for whom it's not applying very well at the moment either, but I'm saying, overall, for 300,000 public servants, overall, it's working pretty well, we think. We would like to see what the changes that happened just a couple of years ago, how they work out, particularly once we've made it pass perhaps another, you know, changeover in administration, and just see if, see if they're really doing the job. It's not to say, as I said in my testimony, it's not to say that there may come a time when we need to look at the post-employment communication ban to see whether or not there should be some changes. We're just saying that perhaps this particular moment is not quite, not quite right yet.
Mr. Carrier, as, as you testified, and, you know, the mission of Coib is to preserve the trust placed in the public servants of the city, to promote public confidence in government- government, to protect the integrity of government decision-making. And the current laws do not allow for that. They allow for legal corruption. And so I'm just shocked that COIB wouldn't come before us today to say, yes, there are clearly improvements we need to make, yes, when the mayor's chief of staff is leaving city government and has a twenty-four million dollar a year lobbying practice, twenty-four hours after leaving city government, he is building a lobbying book while working in this building? That is egregious. It is egregious. And you're telling me that you don't think it needs to be changed? I could give you a hundred examples just like this. But I'm shocked that considering the mission of your agency, you wouldn't be here testifying saying, you're right, we do need to close these loopholes, we do need to work and do more together to ensure the integrity in our local government, because that is not what I heard today. I heard you testify in opposition to these issues and to claim that it's going to undermine recruitment and retention in city service. But Mayor Adams was able to recruit deputy mayors, finance commissioners, investigation commissioners, and all of these other positions, subject to these new restrictions, that we are advocating for in this legislation to expand to get more positions. So what proof or evidence do you have beyond your anecdotal insight that modifying post-employment restrictions would have any impact on recruitment and retention?
Councilmember, I, I'm sorry that that's the message that you've taken away from my testimony today. I, I don't think that that's what I've testified to. I think that what we've been trying to articulate on behalf of our board is just a slower approach to making changes to this restriction to make sure that we're getting it right. Because we think that there are a lot of public servants who would be affected by, a lot of positions in city government, that would be affected by this proposal in a way that would have some significant unintended consequences.
I hear you, but when I see corruption taking place, I don't believe that a slow approach is appropriate. We have to step up, intervene, and fix it. That, I'm not here to sit around and watch paint dry to see if maybe in a few years, things might get better. We see broken systems today, they need to be fixed today. That is my approach to governing, and it's the approach of the city council. I do want to recognize my friend and neighbor, Councilmember Gutierrez. Thank you for joining us. I have, if you have any questions, just let us know, we'll jump in whenever. Okay, I have a couple more questions, and then I'd like to shift to the other agencies who've been gracious enough to join us today. But just to clarify on the recruitment and retention piece, do you have any evidence to your, to underscore your concern that these policies could undermine recruitment and retention?
I, I think, Councilmember, Chair Ressler, I apologize, the testimony is clear that we are identifying issues and concerns, and the process of a charter revision commission, we are not hiring managers, we're not, we don't work in appointment offices, we're not involved in the recruitment and retention of, of agency heads, this is not our field of expertise. That is exactly the reason, your identification of what evidence is, is in fact why we think a charter revision commission is the proper process, because it would allow the opportunity for those individuals who work in those fields, who have the experience, who are in city government, to be able to provide that testimony and information.
So I heard, we don't have proof or evidence to this effect, you're just expressing that these are potential concerns that you think could exist.
We're not, we're not an evidence, we're not a research agency, we're, we care about the functioning of city government.
I understand, but you're, you're expressing that your opposition to this legislation is because you think it could undermine recruitment and retention. I'm saying, we don't have a record of that with the mayor's recent round of appointments that have been subject to these expanded lobbying restrictions that we think should be expanded yet further, and...
They weren't subject to the restrictions that are in this bill.
They were not, but they, they were subject to the twenty-nineteen charter revision commission restrictions that are similar to the restrictions that we would impose in this bill to more public officials. And, so, relatedly, you're saying we should go through a charter revision commission process. You know, one of, the charter calls for COIB to review chapter sixty-eight and submit recommendations to the council at least once every five years. It appears the last recommendations we received were in twenty-fourteen. Could you explain?
The board has had a substantial amount of turnover, in part because of the changes to the board that were implemented by the twenty-nineteen charter revision commission. We have multiple board members who've served less than two years on the board, so we're, the board is working to acclimate themselves to the conflicts of interest law. Also, we had the board, a very experienced board, put before the council extensive recommendations to the charter that were not taken up by the council at that time. So we, the board still believes that those extensive proposed revisions to the charter remain worthy of consideration.
We share your assessment, we think that many of the recommendations that you made in two thousand and nine were smart and appropriate, and we do hope to revisit them. One item that I believe you considered back then, related to pre-employment restrictions and a proposed cooling-off period for public servants when they enter city service, we'll stick with the example of the day, because it's just easier to, to use specifics. Mr. Carone famously was an attorney for many different clients with business before the city when he was appointed chief of staff. Are, were there any, are there currently any restrictions that are in place for someone like that who has been an attorney for clients with business before the city, lobbyist for real estate clients, lobbyist for others, when they enter city hall? Can they continue to talk to their former clients and advocate for their interests from the inside?
So, so chapter sixty-eight, you're correct, and that was one of, one of the proposals in the, I believe in the two thousand and nine charter revision recommendations for our board. Chapter sixty-eight does not contain a pre-employment restriction. There are other jurisdictions that have such pre-employment restrictions. But that's not to say that the charter doesn't restrict conduct of public servants who recently entered city service with regard to some of their prior interests, insofar as they continue to have any kind of financial connection, unpaid, you know, bills that haven't been paid yet, continuing to have, say, if they've dissolved their membership in a partnership, the time that it takes to dissolve that membership and have their, be paid out for that. When those financial interests continue to exist for that duration of time, a public servant still is prohibited, under charter section twenty-six oh four B three, from being involved in matters involving, you know, whoever that is, whether a person, firm, where they still have that. But there isn't an express pre-employment restriction.
Well, we appreciated the recommendations that you made in two thousand and nine to consider greater pre-employment restrictions, and I think we'd be very interested in working together with you to revisit it. I do just have one last question for you all, at least for the moment, I apologize, I may, I may think of others. But I wanted to ask you about a comment you made, Mr. Carrier, that relates to a lifetime particular matter ban for issues that somebody works on when they're in city hall. For positions like chief of staff to the mayor that touch just about everything of consequence, what review is conducted by COIB or otherwise to determine what are the issues that individual X is not permitted to work on subsequently, following their, their service in local government?
Chair Ressler, we, because we are just an agency with currently twenty-two people, we, we do not conduct a review of that type, you know, we don't go out to do that. But many public servants come to us to seek advice about that subject, and then we will review, you know, the, the questions they've got and try to help them.
Like, for a position like this one, just as an example, for a deputy mayor that's touched so much in city government while they work here, how can you evaluate the scale of, of issues to, that they can, should no longer be engaged with?
I, really, the information about what they have worked on, what particular matters they have worked on, and the standard is worked on personally and substantially, is something, is information that they or their agency would have to provide to us. We obviously don't, you know, we're an independent agency, we, we don't know what the day-to-day work of every public servant is.
No, look, I, I'm super sympathetic, you've got twenty-two people and, you know, dozens of folks asking you every single day for advice and guidance, is a lot on your plate with a relatively limited capacity. Appreciate the longstanding recommendations you've had to have more investigative capacity in-house to be able to take ownership for more of this work. But it's, it feels like a Sisyphean task to be trying to, to hope that all twenty thousand people that are leaving city government every year are following their post-employment restrictions. Indeed, we're only identifying three people a year who are. And for something like this, on the issues that the most senior officials are unable to work on or should not, you know, it's very challenging to have any oversight to inform what those issues are. And I just, I think it would be helpful to work together to think about how you all could be resourced to actually provide that oversight in a rigorous and effective way. Last one, and I, I told you that you couldn't trust me when I said last one, so last one for now. The mayor's previous counsel said in an interview that his office had worked with COIB to provide a set of guidelines to senior officials. And I know you won't provide a specific guidance for an individual, and that that could be considered, you know, confidential. But for something like this, where the, the mayor's chief counsel said that he worked with COIB to provide guidance to senior city hall officials on related matters, is, are those guidelines that could be shared with us? Or could you confirm that you worked with the mayor's general, chief counsel to craft those guidelines?
I, I think, well, any, right, any documents or records that are in our possession are not things that we can provide. And when we provide advice, including by working with general councils at city agencies, chief counsel, the mayor, and, and general counsel here at the city council, to help provide some advice about policies that, that agency might be interested in working on, I couldn't, you know, I couldn't answer the question of whether we've done that for any particular agency, but the confidentiality is for them. So they are free to disclose, to disclose that sort of guidance. Now, all that being said, we work with, you know, any city agency's general counsel or chief counsel who comes to us who would like some help in trying to comply with the conflicts of interest law. We are, of course, eager to help. We want to help people comply with the law, our goal is to take whatever steps we possibly can to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to shift to the, to the clerk and your team. I thank you also for being, thank you again for being with us today. You know, as I, you know, noted in my opening remarks, last year lobbyists were paid one-hundred-and-thirty-one million dollars, almost double what they were paid a decade ago. Could you just remind us on exactly how many staff Lobbying Borough has overseeing this industry? How has the staffing capacity of the Lobbying Borough Bureau changed over the past decade? And you think, given that we've seen a doubling in the amount of lobbying activity, should the city clerk's Lobbying Bureau have doubled as well in that intervening time? And then lastly, just on that, could you let us know if the recent pegs that you've been subject to by the mayor have impacted the Lobbying Bureau's operations?
So, we currently, the Lobbying Bureau currently operates with Damaris Acosta, our deputy city clerk, she oversees the Lobbying Bureau, our deputy general counsel, a chief investigator, an investigator, and a paralegal. In addition, my general counsel, my deputy city clerk overseeing the Marriage Bureau, and myself, you know, work, we contribute to the work of the, okay, we contribute to the work of the Lobbying Bureau together. After local law, two, one twenty-nine of two thousand and thirteen, as I said before, we did hire a full-time trainer to assist us with rolling out the amnesty period and doing the outreach for that. And unfortunately, that person departed, and we do need to fill that vacancy. You know, before that, we, we've had other, you know, we've had a couple more investigators at one time, but we found that it's been very difficult for us to retain people, you know, for these tasks. The people that are working that I have described are very hard-working people, and we've been doing a lot of juggling to make sure that we carry out our mandates. So, would, you know, would we like to see, you know, the number of staff doubled? We would welcome any increase of resources that we could get. Unfortunately, our pegs, as I mentioned before, have been substantial, and we're not even in compliance with our head count. Because we, we had, we couldn't, you know, when the pegs were given, we couldn't lay anybody off. So, you know, things were done through, on an attrition basis. But between the fact that we haven't met our attrition goals, and we've had three people return from maternity leave, who went on maternity leave prior to the, the pegs, were actually over our required head count. And we have another, the, the one other person who's still out on maternity leave contacted us recently and expressed that she would like to return earlier. So, you know, there's, with the pegs, you know, that are in place, there's no way we can hire anyone new until we, you know, meet those goals. So we would love to see, I, I mean, it would be nice if, if the pegs, you know, that, that have been extended into the out-years, you know, can be addressed during the budget. I, I would love to see that, that would be, you know, huge for us.
We will do our best, and focus on that as we enter into the budget negotiations. Could you just remind us, how many audits are conducted each year? How has that changed over time? And my, our review found that these audits generated between fifty and one-hundred-and-thirty findings that required actions annually. Is that a high rate of findings? What are the, and I guess, do you think more audits would be beneficial to help identify more issues that exist within these lobbying reports?
Yes, we, we do think more audits would be helpful. The audits help us to find where lobbyists are not providing information about their targets, they're not providing the proper, they're not identifying the local law, they're not identifying the borough block and lot number, which is required for any kind of real property or land use lobbying. And we make corrections to, to these lobbyists, and, and notify them that these are very important, you know, things that, that they're, that they're required to do and often do not do. So the, the audits are very helpful. When we first had the law changed, I think it was local law fifteen of two thousand and six, that incorporated the, the audit, the random audit program, we started with thirty audits, and then in two thousand and twelve, we increased that number unilaterally to forty-five audits, because, and, and, and we definitely think it was worth raising the number, and, you know, we definitely should consider raising it again.
We're still at forty-five audits a year despite significant increase in the amount of lobbying activity, and it's a staff capacity issue, but...
That's correct.
We would benefit from clearly having more audits in place.
Just, Council, excuse me, Chairperson, just to add, we review every single statement or registration and retainer agreement filed by every single lobbyist, even if they're not selected for audit. And we do that every year. So even everyone else is still, their, the information in their registrations is still being checked. Anything that's missing is their serve notice is secure, asked to correct it and provided. So, the end, you know, it's not as though there are forty-five entities that are being examined and everyone else is not.
No, 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 I appreciate it, you're looking at everything, but in the forty-five audits you're doing, you're identifying on average one to three findings that require action, that's not a significant amount, you know, annually. And, you know, we've seen a great increase in the amount of lobbying, and it, it probably would be helpful if we had capacity to, it would clearly be helpful if we had capacity to conduct more audits. So, I just wanted to ask specifically on the question of a, what it would take to ban somebody from being a lobbyist in New York City, knowing and willful violations, could you expand upon that?
In terms of knowing and willful violations, you know, first of all, you, you know, we, we've actually tried to look at a standard for knowing and willful, and we've actually, you know, talked to the law department about that. And there's no, you know, standard that they were able to identify in, you know, anywhere in this structure of what constitutes willful. So, you know, we would have to look at, you know, case law, you know, in the criminal context to kind of find that. So we haven't found, you know, where, where someone's conduct was so egregious that it rose to the level of willfulness that we said, this is clearly willful, without that standard. Because, you know, for the most part, we find that most lobbyists, you know, in, in the system, you know, do try to comply. And when there is an issue, when it comes to late fees or with a failure to fire, file a certain report, the lobbying law contains a fourteen-day notice, a fourteen-day cure period. So before, you know, we can take any further action, we have to send out notices to cure for any discrepancy in a lobbyist's filing. So that kind of limits our ability, you know, everybody has a chance to cure their, their, their lobbying, so that kind of can hide a multitude of sins, as it were.
Yeah. Yeah. The clerk's office with a five-person lobbying bureau, I don't imagine, has the ability to conduct proactive investigations. Um, so could you share with us a breakdown, kind of year over year, of how many cases, if any, have been referred to DOI, um, maybe in the last few years? And if it's easier to follow up in writing, that would be fine. And similarly, I think we'd be interested in a breakdown of how many cases were pursued for different types of violations, failure to report, filing incorrect information, or is that a, is that something you could follow up with us in writing, perhaps subsequent to the hearing, or if you have any of that information today?
I mean, generally speaking, um, we could definitely follow up with you on, on the investigations. It seems that we, we have one to three investigations a, a year that, that come up usually due to somebody notifying the office.
Get referred to DOIs.
In terms of referrals to DOI, we have a lot of contact with DOI, but it's mostly DOI contacting us-
Got it.
...for information about lobbyists. We have not had, uh, you know, we, we have not found any knowing and willful violations that were required to be, uh, reported to DOI. In fact, there haven't been a lot of situations on the lobbying side where we've had to call DOI in. Um, there was one situation, I think, involving pension lobbying that, that we contacted them, and, uh, and that was it. But, but it, there haven't been, uh, you, you know, that many, there haven't been really any, any incidents to speak of that required that to happen.
And just in terms of the violations, it's actually reported, it's included in our annual report, so we'd be happy to compile it, um, for, you know, and provide analytics on it, but that is something that we include in our annual reports.
Thank you. And I, I did review last year's annual report and found it to be very helpful, so thank you for that. Um, I'd like to ask about kind of the topic of unregistered lobbyists, which I think was a major goal of the '06 and 2013 lobbying reforms, and, and my sense is, is we made some meaningful progress at that time on this issue. I'd imagine it's impossible to estimate the scale of unregistered lobbying, or to know how many people may be lobbying without, you know, properly filing with, with the clerk's office. And I just kind of wanted to, to think about it from a little bit of a different direction. Is there education that's required of city employees on lobbying laws and reporting requirements? Do you think if people like us, um, folks on the mayor's side and, and the city agencies were better trained, um, you know, if the targets of lobbying activity were better trained, we could help ensure that, or we could help flag for you all, you know, potentially unreported activity?
We believe it would be helpful, um, because, you know, there's no, we don't conduct training of city employees with respect to lobbyists, so it would definitely be helpful, in our opinion.
Great. I think it's something that we should think a lot about, about whether there are opportunities for us to require more training of the targets of lobbying, so that we can do a better job of informing you all. I, I think it would be an interesting case study to look at who I've talked to in the last four months, and who reported it to you, and who, who is missing. Um, and, uh, I imagine that there's quite a few people that are. Um, we really appreciate the data that's included in the annual report and the data that's accessible in open data. Um, I guess, is it possible to update the data from the clerk's office on the open data portal, um, on a more frequent basis?
Um, in preparation for the hearing, I reached out to our contact at OTI, and, uh, they, you know, they, they would be more than willing to, to look at it. I mean, we, we've talked about doing it, and, uh, it's something that, you know, they're, they'll be happy to look into. I mean, they have the same resource issues that every city agency has, but they're definitely willing.
Great. We will definitely follow up with you all on that. And this is another issue that I think is probably mostly a technology issue, as the fundraising and political consulting reports. I have to say, I did not know much about these until Courtney Gross's great reporting on them, that last year, um, but I found it very insightful, and looked into it a bunch in advance of this hearing. I know Councilmember Brewer has known about this for a very long time, but I, I learned about it last year. Um, so I, I guess just help me on, on these, if, just, you know, on the record, if I wanted to know how much money lobbyists raised for Mayor Adams in 2023, could you describe the process for how I would access that information?
Um, it can be accessed two different ways. Um, you could go to Campaign Finance and look at their filings, or you could go to our public system, NYC Lobbyist Search, and you could obtain the information. The limitation is that you have to enter the lobbyist, and then you have to basically select their report. And then if they filed one for the year, you look at one; if they filed up to six, you look at six. Um, you could also, we've been, we've been aware of this issue, um, and we have been in consultation with OTI, and they are expecting that by December 31st, they're going to e- oh, expand the open data platform to include those reports.
Oh, great.
So that would be really helpful, and also-
That would be very helpful.
-we are looking into whether they can update lobbyist search to add a left navigation field, so that it can just be accessed directly. And also, for now, we willingly provide the information to anyone that requests. If they want the reports, or if they want, um, a spreadsheet, you know, we've provided that, um, information, but we are looking to, so hopefully, you know-
That's great, because it is, it's quite a cumbersome process to go report by report, to dig in and find it, and even to know where to look. It's, it's not straightforward, and so I'm thrilled to hear that, uh, you, you've been successfully working with OTI and expect to have that information on the open data portal by the end of the year, and that you're looking into a navigation system to make it more easily accessible for everyone. I think that's great. Um, and I just, relatedly, is the clerk's office on track to publish the lobbyist fundraising and political consulting data, uh, for the, on the NYC open data portal by, uh, December 31st of this year, which I believe is what's required of you all?
It's, it's not currently required, but-
Oh, it's not?
-but we are, we have been wanting to implement it regardless, and we are on track to do it by December 31st.
Oh, great, okay, that's great. Okay, I didn't, I didn't, I think I misunderstood.
We're cautiously optimistic.
Cautiously optimistic. You know, every technology project-
I mean, I think maybe you meant to include it in our annual report.
Well, I did, I am interested in that, too. Is it something that you would all consider inclusion in?
Yes.
Yes, great. That would be terrific. Um, and, relatedly, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Ryan as well, but are these reports proactively shared with the CFP? Or could they be? Should they be? What do you recommend?
Well, I mean, you know, there, there are, there is information from our reports that do it, um, you know, shares with, automatically with Campaign Finance Board, to our knowledge. So, you know, I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't. It would be another kind, it would be one of the things we would have to work with OTI on, uh, so that, you, you know, it could be done automatically. But some, some, you know, sometimes it's, certain things are done automatically and certain things are done manually, and for manual things, you know, on their end, it could be more time-consuming.
My, maybe I'll shift to Mr. Ryan for a moment. Um, my, and we're hoping to have a future hearing to dig into this topic in much greater detail, but my understanding is that a lobbyist operating as a, you know, fundraiser for the mayor is required to complete these forms, submits the forms to, uh, to the clerk's office that they raised X amount of dollars, uh, for the mayor over the previous period, time period. But depending on, you know, how the fundraiser is structured, they may or may not be required to report to CFP that they were operating, that, uh, that the lobbyist was raising money for the mayor, that they may not be required to be reported as, and as an intermediary in CFP's process. Is that right?
Um, sounds like it's correct, but I want to make a couple of things clear. First of all, the intermediary disclosure requirements are imposed upon the campaign committees, so it is incumbent upon the committees to ascertain who is serving as an intermediary with respect to contributions that that committee receives, and then the committee submits to us an intermediary report. One of the, probably the most important reason we, uh, receive lobbyist data is to enforce our lower contribution limits that apply to those doing business with the city and to lobbyists, it's the same-
And because those funds are not matchable.
Correct. Not matchable, they also don't count towards qualification for the thresholds for the public funding program.
And do you know, does the CFP proactively cross-check with the information that is submitted in the lobbyist's reports?
With respect to eligibility of match, yes, we scrutinize those contributions quite carefully. Um, and, you know, I, my excellent team at the Campaign Finance Board has gone pretty deep into the trees, so to speak, on Intro 742, but I want to make sure we don't miss the forest for the trees. I have two pretty significant concerns-
Okay.
-with the bill, one constitutional, one with respect to administration of the bill that I would love to speak to-
Please.
-if I may. Um, so as, one of those concerns relates to the constitutionality of the law, the other relates to the administrability of the law, and if addressed, I think would likely address many of the more granular issues that my team flagged for me, and perhaps would address some of the more pointed questions you might have for me today. As clearly stated in title, in the title of Intro 742, this law would prohibit certain lobbying by individuals engaged in campaign fundraising or political consulting activities. This framework turns the conventional approach to regulating in this arena on its head. The conventional approach is to regulate particular activities of lobbyists. The bill's framework prohibiting certain lobbying activities by those engaged in fundraising or consulting could have significant constitutional law and administrative implications. So first, regarding the constitutional law implications, applying campaign finance restrictions on lobbyists is fairly common. These restrictions have largely withstood constitutional scrutiny. Here in New York City, for example, when lobbyists challenged the city's reduced political contribution limits for lobbyists and those doing business with the city, a federal district court and the federal Second Circuit Court of Appeals upheld the city law against first and Fourteenth Amendment challenge. The case was Ognanene v. Parks, which the Second Circuit decided in 2012. The Parks, who is the named defendant in this case, was the Campaign Finance Board's chair at the time, Joseph P. Parks. In considering the constitutionality of these lower contribution limits applicable to lobbyists, the courts applied a heightened intermediate scrutiny that is routinely applied to contribution limits across the board. Um, by contrast to political contribution limits, many other types of laws that burden First Amendment activities are subjected to so-called strict scrutiny, and there's a saying among First Amendment litigators, strict in theory, fatal in fact. And that's because, once a court decides to apply strict scrutiny, the challenged law rarely survives that scrutiny. But in Ognanene, the Second Circuit rejected the plaintiff's argument that strict scrutiny should apply, and instead, the court applied what it called the more lenient heightened intermediate scrutiny, and found that the challenged law was constitutionally permissible because it was closely drawn to address the significant governmental, governmental interest in reducing corruption or the appearance thereof. My constitutional law concern with this proposed law is that, rather than applying restrictions on fundraising by lobbyists, which would be subject to this more lenient heightened intermediate scrutiny, this law would prohibit lobbying and would likely be subject to strict judicial scrutiny, making it much harder to defend in court if it's challenged. This differential treatment in constitutional law is because lobbying is considered core First Amendment activity. The First Amendment explicitly protects the right to petition the government, and by contrast, making political contributions has been deemed by courts to be a form of indirect speech. Making contribution is an expressive act, but it is not itself speech. Um, my second concern is an administrative one, there are administrative implications to this unconventional approach of prohibiting certain lobbyist activities of those who engage in fundraising or consulting, rather than regulating the fundraising and consulting activities of lobbyists. The law would mandate that the Campaign Finance Board work with agencies and the council to develop notices and advertisements intended to reach persons that engage in fundraising activities or political consulting activities, that will inform such persons of the prohibition set forth in this law. The universe of people engaged in fundraising and consulting activities is a largely unknown universe. To my knowledge, there is no database or list of people engaged in fundraising or consulting. By contrast, if the council were to take the more conventional approach, applying fundraising and consulting restrictions on lobbyists, then educational efforts could focus on the known universe of registered lobbyists, and that database obviously does exist. Clerk has been discussing it today, and the clerk's office maintains it. Um, the new law's starting point would be the known universe of lobbyists, prohibiting them from fundraising or consulting for any office holder they have lobbied or reasonably expect to lobby, which is the thrust of the law, even in its present form. Um, such an approach would be on sound or constitutional footing, and would also be easier to administer. Um, there are some foreseeable potential shortcomings in my suggested more conventional approach, and if the starting point for this regulatory regime is registered lobbyists, as I suggest it should be, there could be instances in which someone isn't a registered lobbyist at the time they do the fundraising or consulting, and they later decide to lobby. One policy solution would be to include the concept that's in the current bill as a backstop of sorts, prohibiting such an individual from lobbying the elected official they raised funds for or worked for. And admittedly, this would raise the same constitutional concerns I flagged moments ago, however, the number of people falling into this category would be relatively small, I think. And I believe that including this type of provision in the law as an anti-circumvention backstop, rather than as the entire legal framework of the law, is more constitutionally defensible. Um, even if this backstop provision were challenged and held unconstitutional, the rest of the law would remain in effect, which would effectively regulate most of the people the law is intended to regulate, the professional political class. Um, by contrast, in its current form, I think the entirety of the law may be vulnerable to constitutional challenge, and if invalidated, the entire regulatory regime would be wiped out. Um, my team has flagged some other issues, uh, more granular issues, but I really just wanted to get out there on the table this constitutional concern, and I think this change would be significant in its impact, particularly in the ability to defend this law against constitutional challenge, but it would not substantially impact the purpose of this bill as it's been proposed.
So I'll start and then kick it over to Councilmember Brewer. Um, thank you for sharing your insights, Mr. Ryan. Uh, we welcome them. The, we do have post-employment restrictions in place currently for who, you know, as, as Coib graciously testified today, that have been in place for decades in New York City, for whom, for, uh, that are limitations imposed on what former colleagues you're allowed to lobby. Why? Could there not be similar restrictions, uh, for paid political consultants and fundraisers on former colleagues that they are permitted to lobby?
Um, my fundamental point is that that would be an untested approach. I don't know of any jurisdiction that does it quite that way, and that it would likely, um, if enacted and then challenged, be subject to strict scrutiny. Um, I've litigated some of these cases, and, and I know from experience, those cases are very difficult to win, and I think there's an easier way, which is to use as your starting point the, the known universe of lobbyists and to regulate their activity. So it's, you know, it's more predictive on my part of what type of analysis the courts would apply, what type of scrutiny, and, um, if there is an easier road and a more defensible road constitutionally, I'm struggling to see a downside in taking that route.
Just making sure I follow, if the clerk's office hypothetically were tasked with confirming that a, uh, registered lobbyist had worked on a political campaign or, uh, conducted fundraising for a, an elected official, uh, within the, you know, previous period of time, then they would be noted, it would be noted in their lobbying reports that they are prohibited from lobbying those individuals during that period of time, whatever the designated period of time is. Is that essentially what you envision?
Yes, and that is what I would describe as sort of the backstop, because the first line of improving or increasing integrity in local government would be to simply say that those who are lobbyists can't raise money for or serve as consultants to the individuals they lobby or anticipate lobbying, and that the restriction on their ability to contribute is a lesser burden on their First Amendment rights than the prohibition on their lobbying. So it's, you know, it's really creating what is in the heart of the, the structure of the current bill as the backstop, um, make the most constitutionally vulnerable aspect of this proposal into this backstop and a small piece of it, and have a slightly different structure capture most of the people we're trying to get at with regulation.
Clerk, to the clerk's office, do you think that could potentially work from your all's perspective, if, if we were to pursue a model along those lines?
Um, I think, I think we could definitely, uh, do it. I mean, it would, it would be a matter of how to, you know, track down the data, but I, I, I don't see why we couldn't.
I also want to always thank the clerk's office, because no matter what gets thrown at you, you always say yes. So I want to, I want to tell you-
That's true.
It is true. And Mike Sweeney has been our savior from day one on that topic. So thank you, and your staff, I want to say that. So, I mean, I don't, I think what you're saying, Mr. Ryan, is that there is already sort of a built-in possibility for, uh, enforcing what we're trying to achieve, and I don't have a problem- And I don't have a problem looking, looking at that. I do think, hopefully, it could be expanded as time goes on, because you have the other side of the coin, you know, where there is no list, as you suggest, of people who, you know, do the campaign consulting. We don't have that list. So I assume that, you know, we sort of have half the coin that we could work with and then see if that achieves our, our goal. I don't, I, I understand what you're saying. I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, which is the whole, what you're saying is, and it is the First Amendment issue, as we know from the Supreme Court also, a little Citizens Union in there, is a big problem that we have to address on many levels. We don't want to lose it on the positive side, as opposed to the Supreme Court with their Citizens Union challenge. So I'm certainly willing to look at this and see if it accomplishes what we're trying to accomplish. I think if the word gets out that there is, you know, a concern and a mandated prohibition about basically my, what I would call double dipping, that's what I would call it, then you have a way to approach it that would be constitutionally upheld, I would love to look at that. So, thank you very much.
And if, and I'd be happy to share a little bit about what information the Campaign Finance Board does presently have in its possession relevant to this bill as it's currently drafted. If we're talking about outside of the universe of lobbyists, simply the universe of non-lobbiists, consultants and fundraisers, we don't really have much of that information, not available to us in any sort of comprehensive or usable format. There's no requirement that committees report their fundraisers or consultants to us in any systematic or uniform way. We do see some of this information, though. So for example, on candidate registration forms, candidates can, but are not required to identify their consultants. Some of them do, many of or most of them do not. We also see some of this information on disclosure reports when campaigns report the purpose of their expenditure. But the quality and the consistency of campaign reporting of expense purpose codes is, I guess to put it bluntly, pretty poor. The most commonly used purpose codes for this type of expense are funder or consultant or professional or the hardest to deal with for the purpose of administering this type of law, other. Making use of this data, as it's presently written in this bill, would require manual inspection, I think, particularly of expenditures coded other, and perhaps cross-referencing with invoices and other documentation to determine whether the activity done by that person paid by the campaign constitutes consultation as defined in the law or fundraising activity defined in the law. That would be a heavily manual project and be a difficult one.
I can promise you there's no such law, I mean, no such list of those who do campaign, that, because I've tried to find such a thing, and there's no such thing. But you're right, it's very haphazard, as you just described. But if you look at it from the other side, prohibiting from those who have a list, that's something to look at. So, thank you very much.
That is very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. I, I do think that you've offered some smart suggestions for how we might be able to achieve our policy goals, and appreciate the thoughtful recommendations for alternative ways of getting there. I'd like to return to ask just a few more questions of the clerk, if, and the team, if that's okay. For the purposes of ensuring that city employees are compliant with restrictions on who they can appear before, do you track if newly registered lobbyists recently left city employment? Do you have access to that information to be able to evaluate whether there may be an issue?
We do not track that information. And we, you know, we've kind of been, you know, operating under, you know, the assumption that we have jurisdiction over the lobbyist, Coib has jurisdiction over employees and former employees, et cetera. So, so we, it's not something that we've really looked at to any extent. I mean, you know, I'm sure that we would have to, and would be able to figure out some way of looking at that, or at least try to establish, you know, how, how to track that down, looking at the universe of lobbyists. I think we were talking about maybe inserting questions into the e-lobbyist, where you would have to certify, you know, if you've worked for the city before, what office did you work for, what was your title, you know, and, and to have it down, you know, kind of load it in on the front end. But that would be one way. We would also probably contact our colleagues at Coib and, and ask for their help and advice on, on trying to, you know, learn that better.
Yeah, that's, appreciate your openness to it. I, I think the other area that I'm kind of interested in drilling down on a little bit more is kind of some of the definitions that we have in reporting. So we looked online just to see how many folks had lobbied me and my staff over, over the course of, of the year-to-date, and found that there were over 150 entities that reported lobbying our office so far this year. But in the reporting, it doesn't indicate whether it was a mass email that was just sent to 51 council members, or if I had four sit-down meetings with them, which are really different types of interactions. Have you considered, in these reports, kind of breaking, tracking with a little more specificity, the type of interaction that's made, whether it be mass email, or phone call, or meeting, or multiple meetings, to give more insight to the public on kind of how, you know, lobbying is, is working?
So currently, the administrative code doesn't require that they enter that information. What's required is subject matter details, and the law says they have to enter, include information sufficient to identify the activity. So as the commissioner mentioned in his openings, for example, if you're talking about a property, you have to include an address. If you're talking about a law, you have to include an intro and a year. But that's really it. The admin code doesn't go into more detail, but certainly, whatever is mandated by the admin code, we'd be happy to enforce and carry out. And when organizations are audited specifically, the subject details are reviewed in more detail, and they often aren't asked to include more information. But the law does not require that they state that, so.
Well, I think it's, you know, something that we should take a look at, because I do think it would be helpful, and they're already submitting the information, it's just not in the reports, right? And so, you're looking at it on the audits, right? So it's, we should be able to, to gather that information and synthesize it for a public review. You know, I'm always frustrated by the times, in my experience working in city government, where people will call me and say, I'm an attorney for this client, and they're doing everything that looks, smells, and acts like lobbying, but it's not lobbying because they're there as the attorney for the client rather than the lobbyist for the client. I, I'm just going to say that as something that I find very frustrating and would like to try to figure out a way to, to, to capture that information more accurately for public review and, and really bring more scrutiny to that issue. Another area that I don't think the lobbying law currently has appropriate clarity is, as I understand it, around mayoral discretionary decision-making. And so, just to, to confirm, if a lobbyist calls the mayor or his team and lobbies them to not support a given project, one way or another, it's not rulemaking, it's not local law, it's just, let's say, a street safety project on McGinnis Boulevard, as an example.
I was wondering if it was going to come up.
You know, I'm very predictable. I guess that's the thing, you know? What you see is what you get. Is that subject to lobbying disclosures? Is that, is, is a lobbyist required to disclose that?
Sorry, we're just fighting to, both are just.
Everybody wants to answer all the questions.
So, so that's, with the way that the law is, is drafted, right? Each of the 11 definitions is very specific, right? It spicks, picks, it lists a target and it lists an activity. So we're, and then there are 11 exclusions, right? So that's what makes it so complicated. So we're, they're only required to report exactly what's listed. That's why we always say, you know, there's no such thing as illegal lobbying, you know, there's plenty of lobbying that is not captured. It's a question of, it's a question of what's reportable. So our admin code does not capture indirect attempts to lobby. So in, in that circumstance, it would depend on who, what, or what agency is making the determination and how those determinations are made. For example, is there a pending rule? Is it a matter of a contract or public funds?
Right.
Or is it a matter of limited discretion per existing laws, rules, and regulations? And in those situations, there are exclusions for what is termed to be an adjudicatory determination. So that's what makes that, that's the hardest question that we get ironically, like, what is this lobbying? That's the most complicated.
But it's just, I, I can't fathom that we have a large employer in Greenpoint, Broadway Stages, that's very famously been advocating, spending, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, sending out mailers, robocalls, lobbying the mayor aggressively, reporting on meetings with the mayor, to not support a DOT-proposed street redesign that's got all the, every elected official, 10,000 community members have signed a petition in support. This entity is aggressively lobbying the mayor, spending in a very public and, and explicit way against a DOT proposal, and it's not lobbying. So, so we need to update the laws to capture that kind of information, capture that kind of activity for something that is, you know, walks and talks and quacks like a lobbyist, but doesn't actually fit the bill.
I, I think, you know, what you're talking about is the indirect lobbying, and I don't think that that's captured in the 11, you know, the 11 types of, of activity that constitutes lobbying, so.
It's the, the phrase indirect lobbying, which I'm sure is the technical phrase, is, it's like, it's hard to stomach, because there's nothing indirect about it, right? I mean, it's a public campaign with, where they're openly walking out of City Hall saying, we met with the mayor to discuss this issue, and he's listened, you know, he's changed his mind because of his meeting with us, and he's no longer supporting the Department of Transportation's Street Safety Plan, and yet, it's not lobbying, right? I just, yeah.
And we, we do not disagree.
Totally.
And I will say that the commission, in 2013, the commission did add a new definition, which would be similar to adding a definition of indirect. They added a provision that stated anyone that attempts to influence a New York City elected official or officer or employee on any state or federal rule, regulation, or resolution was captured. And before 2013, 13, excuse me, that was not part of the law. So I do think there is sort of like a precedence for adding that type of, of, of definition into the, into the regulations.
Well, I, Grace, want to just thank you all for being so patient and doing two-plus, two-and-a-half hours of questions with us. I really appreciate you all coming in. I think we certainly got a bunch of really good suggestions from each of you for ways that we should be working to update some of these laws that weren't officially under consideration today, but this was really our first lobbying oversight hearing as a councilman since Gail was here before her borough presidency days. So that was some time ago. And I'm really glad that, that you all were willing to take the time, appreciative that you're willing to take the time, answer our questions, engage with us constructively, and look forward to being in touch with each of you in the near future. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that the quorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times, unless you're testifying. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Furthermore, members of the public may not present audio or visual recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please do fill out an appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have three minutes to speak at today's, on today's hearing topics, New York City's lobbying laws and necessary reforms. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov with 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and visual recordings will not be accepted. Council members who have questions for a particular panelist, please let me know, and I will call on you after the panelist has completed their testimony. Once again, thank you for those of you who are testifying in person and registered in advance. Please fill out an appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms. For panelists on Zoom, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Upon setting the timer, please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. I am now privileged to invite our first panel to come up. We have some exceptional, good government groups with us. I'd like to invite Ben Weinberg of Citizens Union, Susan Lerner of Common Cause New York, Rachel Fauss of Reinvent Albany, and on Zoom, Blair Horner of Nipeberg, who is, I believe, surviving the Albany budget. Thank you all for being with us. And feel free to testify in whatever order you all prefer.
I've been elected to go first. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.
I'm Susan Lerner, Executive Director of Common Cause New York. I want to thank you for a very lively and informative hearing this morning. From our point of view, and as really explored in Zephyr Teachout's excellent book regarding the history of lobbying and anti-corruption measures in our country, for many decades, if not centuries, lobbying was considered illegal. And actually, the constitutional status of lobbying is, is quite murky, as she explores. I think what we heard this morning and what we've seen in the 2013 charter revision is a lack of understanding of the real way in which influence is wielded in city government, and the fact that lobbyists and those who are part of the revolving door have a real interest in ensuring that any restrictions are very, very limited. We need to rebalance, and we believe that these three measures help to rebalance between the public interest and being sure that our government makes good decisions based on all information with integrity, and the right of those to petition the government, perhaps as a paid employment. So we very much approve the impetus behind these measures. We have no problem responding to some of the concerns this morning. I think that the measures 76 and 77 could certainly be crafted to exempt some of the commissioners, some of the executive directors. But when we're dealing with elected officials, and particularly in a revolving door situation, we are dealing with a position of unusual trust, as well as those who are appointed to high administrative positions. And I believe that people who have the privilege of serving as public, of public servants and being paid as such, need to keep in mind that they have a position of unusual trust in the public, both while they're on the payroll and after they go off the payroll. So we support the impetus. We are certainly open to seeing the 76 and 77, Intro 76 and 77 restrictions nuanced a bit more, but the idea that there should be one, two-year ban, bringing us in line with the state ban, and that there are individuals who should have a ban on any communications with any city agency is a good one. I personally am very excited to see the introduction of 742, because the way in which campaign consultants and lobbying firms have kind of merged and have a confluence is an issue that I've been talking and writing about for the last 10 years. So we very much support that effort. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I was going to say good morning, as that's what my testimony says, but good afternoon, Chair Russler and Councilmember Brewer. My name's Rachel Fauss. I'm the Senior Policy Advisor for Reinvent Albany. We advocate for more transparent and accountable New York government, both in the city and the state. And thanks again for holding this hearing. Definitely struck that it's been 10 years. I was wearing a different hat at the time that the changes went into effect, actually his hat, so. We support the intent of the three bills you're considering today, and to reduce the undue influence of deep-pocketed political interest and slow the revolving door of city government employees lobbying their former employer, the city of New York. However, we urge you to aim much higher. At a minimum, New York City- At a minimum, New York City should have a three-year lobbying revolving door ban. Just to put things in perspective, Florida has a six-year ban, and this is on elected officials and very high-ranking, uh, folks. This was passed by public referendum in 2018. I'm going to repeat that, a six-year ban. So surely, New York City can pass a ban half as long as Florida's. And the two-year ban, I think, exists in many states where there's two-year terms. We have a four-year term, so I think that's something to think about in how this is crafted. Um, and just to speak to the three-year ban, I think we'd like to see it apply to all three of the bills. You know, what category of people, the policymaker list, you know, I think we heard a lot of discussion today about who to get, but I think a, a bright line of three years and also a bright line that it's not just your former employer, but also the entire city is really important. Because when you have different standards for different individuals, it gets very confusing. And I think it's, we know that enforcement's challenging when there's extremely limited staffing levels, so the brighter the lines are, the better. On a couple of other matters around, uh, lobbying activity, just want to draw to your attention, um, in 2013, the city council passed the, a major changes to lobbying law, and one of those was that smaller lobbyists, those that spend less than $10,000, and do not hire outside, um, firms, they should only have to report twice a year, rather than six times. It's not that their lobbying reporting, activity is not reported. It's absolutely reported. It just, the filing burden was reduced by, from our understanding, that has not been implemented. Um, that's something I think you should consider looking at. Uh, we crunched the numbers in the e-Lobbyist Open Data. It looks like there's about 140, um, groups who fall into that. Some of them are notable, Community Service Society, Habitat for Humanity, New York Botanical Garden, Queensborough Public Library, a lot of nonprofit institutions. Full disclosure, Reinvent Albany is also on that list. Um, other piece, while I've got seven seconds, um, I'm glad to hear that the fundraising and political consulting data is going to be reported as open data. That's great. We'd like you to introduce a bill that would specify whether lobbying reporting, whether lobbyist activity is in support or opposition to bills. Right now, you only know they lobbied on the, a subject. You don't know whether it was in support or opposition. This is done in other states like Montana. We think you should introduce a bill to help tighten up the law. Thanks.
Thank you so much. I totally agree. It's a very good recommendation. And I just want to say, um, just prior to your testimony, Ben, we just wanted to thank you for your expert kind of analysis and guidance that you provided to our office in advance of the hearing.
I was happy to hope, and, um, now it's on me to thank you, Councilmember Brewer, both for introducing these bills and, uh, for, um, bringing us all together to discuss this important issue. As was mentioned here, since 2007, lobbyists have been required to disclose information about their political consulting and, and fundraising activities in their periodic reports. Uh, now, that disclosure was a necessary first step, but we're, we're 17 years later, and, uh, that, that hasn't really led to any reduction in the number of these kind of dual-service firms that also, that serve campaigns and lobby city government. In fact, we, our analysis, as, and as the Executive Director of the CFB mentioned, is an imprecise analysis, because the numbers are imprecise, but our analysis did found that of the top 50 companies that provide campaign consulting and professional services provided in the 2021 election, 24, 24% of them were lobbyists. So almost a quarter, right, of the kind of top, um, campaign consulting firms in that cycle were lobbyists, and that's actually higher than had existed 10 years before. Uh, our written testimony includes some clear examples of those conflicts, where, where lobbying firms help candidates to win and then go on to lobby those same people in office. So that's why we vermet support intro 742, uh, which would limit the ability of, of firms and individual to lobby the candidates they help get elected. It was mentioned earlier that this might be an unconventional approach. I should point out that, uh, San Francisco has a similar restriction, they actually have a stricter one of five-years, uh, ban, and places like Philadelphia, Alaska, and Maryland all have rules against the direct involvement of lobbyists in campaign or fundraising for campaigns. Some of them has been litigated. We have three recommendations to strengthen this bill, or I, I should mention two here. First, uh, it currently covers only elected officials that are former clients, and we think it should cover also staff members or appointees of those elected officials. So this is especially important for mayoral candidates, and really, most of the kind of recent news we've seen around this are about, um, lobbying commissioners after you left the, um, uh, after you ran a mayoral campaign. Uh, the other one is really to ensure that lobbying firms can't avoid this bill by either setting up a new division or a new LLC, um, and, uh, and we have some proposed language in the bill on how to, uh, counter that. Um, uh, of, of short of time, I will just mention that, uh, we also support better lobbying, better transparency on the lobbying disclosure of fundraising and political activities. As Chair Wrestler mentioned, it is very difficult to access those, that information, and nor is the information reported in the annual reports. Uh, it would be great to know things like, uh, you know, see aggregated data of those disclosures. How many fundraisers are held by lobbyists, top lobbying firm, political consulting. Um, I'll wrap up. Uh, I'll be remiss if I won't mention that we also support another important, um, uh, way to close a play-to-play loophole in our lobbying laws, and that is to ban lobbyists from bundling donations. Um, lobbyists and people on the Doing Business Database are severely restricted in terms of the size of the contribution they can give candidates, but they can kind of freely bundle donations, and we have examples of lobbyists donating more than 100 times of their individual limit. In fact, uh, in the last election, from what we saw, nine of the top 10 bundlers were either lobbying firms, their employees, or officials in companies that do business with the city. So that is imperative, we make sure we close that, uh, ban. Lastly, on the two bills on post-employment bans, um, we support the proposal to extend the, those restrictions, um, that would apply to, sorry, the restrictions for the mayor's office for two years, which would be in line with, uh, rules at the Executive Chamber in Albany. Uh, and we also support expanding the post-employment restriction to any agency for policymakers at the mayor's office and the city council, and any other high-ranking government officials with broad inter-agency powers. Uh, we do recommend not to include all public servants on the policymaker list and all members of boards and commissions from, um, appearing before any agency, uh, and that is because of, uh, actually what was mentioned here earlier, um, our concern of the effect it would have about the ability of the city to recruit and maintain personnel, as well as the size of that group. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you today.
Thank you so much. I'd just like to ask, oh, oh, Blair, sorry, I forgot about you. I forgot about Zoom. Mr. Horner, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Still hear me? I'm just, I'm being muted and unmuted at the same time. Now, maybe that's, uh, maybe that's Ben doing that, I don't know.
It's definitely Ben.
Uh, good afternoon. My name's Blair Horner. I'm Executive Director of Neiperg, a nonpartisan, not-for-profit research and advocacy organization. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to testify on the proposals to strengthen the oversight of the lobbying industry and to curb conflicts of interest that can impact New York City government. We applaud you for holding the hearing, and I'll summarize our written comments, which you, which you have already received. Uh, Neiperg supports the measures under consideration by the committee. Uh, New York City has been the state's leader in tackling conflict of interest issues, and this package will boost public participation in the city and help advance reform in Albany. As you can see in our written testimony, the growth of lobbying in the city has been staggering, and the temptation for public servants to cash in on their governmental contract, contacts has never been greater. Thus, it makes perfect sense to strengthen revolving door limitations. While the city has been a leader in the regulation of lobbying and curbing confluence, uh, curbing confluence, uh, conflicts of interest, the growth of state lobbying and ethics regulations has become deeply entwined with that of the city. As a result, New York has two parallel systems, similar but different. Those differences can lead to confusion and may unintentionally create obstacles to policy participation by those who simply cannot handle compliance requirements that are complex at both the state and city levels, but are also different. Those voices can be silenced by these two systems. Our observations are not, however, a call for city policymakers to weaken standards in order to mirror the state. State law should be viewed as a floor, not a policy ceiling, and city policymakers should continue to innovate in order to help the evolution of ethics and lobbying oversight, both at the city and the state. Your measures to curb the revolving door between public service and lobbying are important and deserve support. Approval will meet the policy floor standards set by the state and then raise the ante. Given the enormous amount of money that is spent on lobbying and the lucrative nature of paid advocacy, it is critically important that those in public service are restrained in their ability to cash in when they leave to join the public sector. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to testify. Would love to have been there in, in person, uh, but unfortunately, I am stuck in Albany, uh, dealing with the state budget. Thank you.
We really appreciate you making time with everything that's going on in Albany, so thank you for that and your sharp testimony. I, I just want to ask one general question to the panel, um, uh, with regard to, and I, I appreciate, uh, Ben, your comment that, uh, there is a model on Councilmember Brewer's bill in San Francisco that is being emulated. What did folks think of the alternative approach suggested by Mr. Ryan from the CFB in trying to tackle, uh, this issue of, uh, regulating, uh, uh, this through the clerk's office? And do you think that could be an effective approach, or do you prefer how this was drafted originally by Councilmember Brewer?
Um, I'll preface this by saying, I'm not sure I, uh, understood the entire proposal, um, but I do think we, uh, we do have already a system where lobbyists disclose their political activities, um, and their fundraising activities. We have a definition in the lobbying law, and they must do, and they must report that. So, um, if that, if the idea is to build on top of that system and those disclosures, I think that totally makes sense, and if it would streamline the process. I will say, we have concerns about whether these disclosures are, these activities are being disclosed. There aren't a whole lot of them that are filed, or at least that, uh, we can find. Um, if you look at the political expenses side, on the CFB side, you see way more companies receiving money for political consulting than lobbying companies, uh, reporting their political consulting. So, um, I think that, uh, we can definitely use that, uh, disclosure system. We just have to make sure that, uh, it is enforced, and those activities are actually disclosed.
I totally agree. I think the enforcement is really important. I know something I meant to mention earlier is we absolutely support independent budgeting for enforcement agencies, like the Conflicts of Interest Board. I mean, the city clerk has an enforcement function that clearly is being hampered right now with the pegs. So I think, you know, bolstering enforcement as part of passing these bills is clearly very important. And I think, you know, we have a doing business list, right? And that is crucial to the campaign finance program, to enforce the limits. Having a list of political consultants and fundraisers that is just as tight and, um, checkable is important, and, you know, I think putting this out in open data is going to help a lot as well, because right now, it's harder to access and there's fewer eyes on it. You know, you want groups, watchdog groups, journalists, the council, you want everybody to have their eyes on that, so making it tight, public, and open data is going to, I think, help with that effort.
And actually, hearing, um, the comments from the Campaign Finance Board reminds me that there is another way to approach this, which is when you accept public money, you accept various restrictions. Uh, and so it could be possible to look at having a condition of accepting matching funds, that you, uh, have a contract with your consultants, that they will not lobby you, uh, that neither they nor firms they are associated with, would lobby you, and that gets you around any constitutional challenge.
That's a, that is a really smart idea.
Great idea.
I like that so much. Um, was there anything you'd like to?
No, I, I was going to ask the same question, and I appreciate, uh, both the CFB and your responses, because in the totem, we've got a real package that I think, uh, people can, uh, be supportive of. So thank you very much.
Agree on both accounts. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else this panel would like to add?
Um, um, I did have a comment on, um, a possible timeframe on 742. Um, I love, as Councilmember Brewer knows, starting it with certification, um, but you might want to, whatever timeframe we end up with, one year, two years, three years, you might want to make it to December 31st, um, so that we don't have to worry about when it starts and when it ends, of the year after the certification.
Um, I just wanted to add one point on 742. I, we totally agree with Citizens Union that you should expand it not just to the individual, but their direct staff. You've got to get the mayor's office staff, you've got to get the councilmembers' office staff, and then, you know, department heads. So just wanted to verbally say that.
Strongly agree. Thank you very much for, both of you for noting that.
One last comment. Susan mentioned timeline, so, um, I think it's clear to all of us, but we should say how important this is, um, as we head into a new mayoral election, uh, and a new citywide election, which is, uh, not very soon, but not very far. Um, some of the practices that we have mentioned here, if that's, uh, lobbyists that run political campaigns or organize fundraisers, uh, lobbyists that bundle, are already happening now for that election. Uh, so, um, and it will just increase. So, um, we should definitely not wait too long to move these things forward.
Great. Anything else, Blair, on your end? We're good. Thank you each for joining us today. We really appreciate you. Oh, was it? No, I think he was giving a smile. We appreciate you each for joining us today and for your, your expert insight. Uh, thank you so much, and have a good weekend. And we've got one more panel before we close out this hearing today. Um, I'd like to invite up Laura Abel from the Lawyers Alliance of New York, and Christopher Leon Johnson, uh, who's testifying on behalf of himself. Thank you, Gail. You have three minutes. Go ahead, Mr. Leon Johnson.
All right. Hey, Lincoln. My name is Christopher Hay Chair. So, um, JQ said, what's up? Impuni said, he said, what's up? So I want to know, um, where do you have the balls to come up with a bill about this? When, to regulate lobbying, when you're brazenly engaged in fake protests and rally with open plans, Transalt, Rise Alliance, and Lawyer Liberty needs those lobbyists, and let their agenda items influence your prop, your policies and other programs? Now, I'm against this bill, because you're introducing this bill. A lot of you members of city council are captive to these lobbyists, such as Tramptation Alternatives, and Open Plans, and the Rise Alliance. Now, what needs to start happening is, members like you, and members like Shahana Anif, need to start condemning Kathy Park Price, who's a lobbyist, who needed to be registered as a lobbyist. If I had my way in the city council, I would have made a bill, introduced this bill to have people like Kathy Park Price register herself as a lobbyist, because she does indirect lobbying, but we all know that she has a big influence in the city council. And we want to know why that you have no problem standing next to seven-time stalker Kevin Luchera, why you, why you not condemning the guy? He's in a lawsuit for, he's in a lawsuit for, um, stalking seven women, and you have no problem standing next to the guy, and you're not condemning the guy for what he's doing as a council member? One more thing is, um, this hearing is nothing but a show. This bill will not go through in the city council. Majority of you members are for, uh, are for standing next to corrupt lobbyists such as Kathy Park Price, and Kevin Luchera, and Danny Harris, and Jackson Shabat, and Elizabeth Adams, and, um, Derek Holmes, and Betsy Plum, and Laura Shepherd, and, um, Kenny Denny Harwitz. This is, is a big issue in the city council, when you have, um, council members standing next to lobbyists that are, that are hell-bent on destroying the city. So, this bill's a sham. This bill's not going to pass the city council. You introduced this bill for clout. You, this bill's been standing for the next, this past two years, and you wait to 2024 to do it because of, because of Frank Carone? Yeah, Frank Carone is corrupt, but you're just as corrupt as him. When you're standing next to dirty lobbyists like Tramptation, Tramptation Alternatives, and Open Plans, and, um, the Rise Alliance, and Lawyer Liberty needs those. So, um, you know, like, like I said, man, I know you don't care, you only going to listen to the lobbyist. This is nothing but a clout bill. This is nothing but a farce bill, and, you know, this not going to pass. I'm against this. So that's all I got to say. Thank you, Lincoln. Thank you.
I'd like to just express my strong disagreement with, uh, uh, those remarks, um, uh, but we thank everyone for coming to testify today. If we've inadvertently missed anyone who is registered to testify today and has yet to be called, please use the Zoom hand function, and you'll be called on. yet to be called, please use the Zoom hand function and you'll be called on, but I don't think we have anyone. We're okay. So I just want to say, uh, in closing, uh, how appreciative I am to the Conflicts of Interest Board, uh, the Clerk's Office, and, uh, to the Campaign Finance Board for coming before us today to testify, and each of the good government groups that have, uh, offered such thoughtful feedback and testimony and input on this legislation. Um, you know, this, it's really important that we provide ongoing and consistent oversight of lobbying activity in New York City. And it's been far too long since we had a hearing like we did today. Um, and it was, I think, a health, healthy and productive conversation for us to identify opportunities, uh, that are considered in the bills for which we heard, uh, but also , um, new ideas that, that really require our attention. And so I hope to, that we'll be able to introduce some new legislation, um, generating, generated from the discussion today and really look forward to working with each of the agencies who had the, the opportunity to, to join us, uh, in crafting that legislation and hopefully signing it into law. Um, thank you all for making the time and hope everybody has a wonderful weekend. Uh, with that, I will adjourn the hearing. Thank you.